All right.
Okay, good afternoon. I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, October 17th, 2024. Is there any late additions or deletions? Okay, will somebody please move that the October 17th, 2024 committee of the whole meeting agenda be adopted? Councillor Klein, Councillor Weave, on favor, carried. 3.1, will somebody please move that the October 1st, 2024 committee of the whole meeting minutes be adopted as presented? Councillor Weave, Councillor Klein, on favor, carried. Any business arising from the minute? No? Okay. 5.1, drop zoning bylaw. So, James.
Yeah, so I'm just here to provide some background and framework for like the drop zoning bylaw. So, just to review, this exchange of creative, progressive zoning bylaw to really allow often density and streamline development, and as hired Alpine Engineering helped finalize a draft zoning bylaw. So, the draft zoning bylaw was initiated back in January 2022 by Director of Development Services. Since then, it's got through many rounds of staff review for both former and current staff. And largely, it's been a lack of staff because he has held back progress on the zoning bylaw. So, since July 2024, staffing Alpine Engineering has since renewed efforts to help finalize the zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw has logically been kept roughly the same as what Kevin Taylor's prescribed, where changes have been made recently. There were to be either better aligned OCP, goals and guidelines, certified language, or better realize the goal of optimizing density. Right? Yeah, so the new zoning bylaw will bear a line to OCP as long as part in the goal of reviewing bylaws to stream my development. For example, the OCP contains specific density guidelines and parcel sizes in rural areas, were currently conflicted with the older zoning bylaw. So, staff have received lots of like rezoning applications, related subdivisions with lot sizes that align with your OCP, and must be assistable, supportable by staff and presumably council, but they don't need the current zoning bylaw. So, that requires a lot of rezoning before subdividing, which creates a barrier to development and ties a lot of staff time. Yeah, so anyways, next steps for the jobs on the way, we public engagement, engaging with Stat Liam, updating, creating a zoning map to reflect the zoning updates and bringing any proposed changes to a final draft or first reading. Anyways, in some, the zoning bylaw is on schedule to be introduced by the end of the year and adopted by the beginning of 2025. I'll hand over to James to discuss key changes and rationale.
Okay, thank you, Zerces, and thank you for the map. Appreciate that.
Good evening, your worship councillors. My name is James, and it's a pleasure to be before you today to help share, inform, and discuss your zoning bylaw. As you can appreciate, aside from your official community plan, your zoning bylaw is one of the most impactful bylaws that you have. It affects every piece of property, every building, every resident. And so, the goal here tonight, in discussion with staff, the hope was to discuss the bylaw, share all of the details, prepare all those proposed changes, and ensure that we're going in the direction that council supports, we're addressing the concerns that you have, issues that may have arisen, and putting that together into a final draft with your support tonight, hopefully with your support tonight. We would then be in a position to take this bylaw out for consultation with key stakeholders, local First Nations, Chamber of Commerce, interested residents. And so, that's the hope is to frankly, share everything we've been doing and address any questions or concerns you may have. And so, our worship, I think the format we were talking about was fairly interactive. Please do stop me. Please, let's talk about concerns as they arise, because we've got an entire bylaw to go through, but staff understanding concerns or our opportunity to share and show and explain. Hopefully, when we're finished, you'll see the work that's gone in, the improvements that are being made, and you're comfortable with the zone draft as it's compiled. So, if I may?
Yeah, that's great. And like I said, any councillors that have any questions, just put their hand, and we'll make sure that you can ask as we go along. And also, can I just ask, if there's any changes in here that relate to the map, can you just kind of tell us that is different on the map, and then we can have that view? Councillor Weave?
I'm just curious, when it goes out to the community and First Nations and Chamber of Commerce and whatnot, do you just collect their remarks and changes or whatnot and bring it back to us at worst?
Thank you for that. The format is flexible. We can tailor it to however council and the community want to see it. Our recommendation is that proposed changes initiated from council would be flagged and added to the draft that gets circulated. The draft would be circulated with time for people to review. Our suggestion, in fact, is to host an open house, so that people have an opportunity to come and discuss and have staff answer questions, answer concerns. What we find is most people like to find their business or their house on a map and discuss what it means, and then have planning staff talk them through. And so, the proposal at the moment is a period for review, in fact, a meeting to compile, and then if staff are able to address all those comments, we'd be in a position to bring draft to you for first and second reading. And if there's more council direction needed, then we would address that as comments require.
Okay, can CEO do?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, James. This is a really exciting opportunity for us, and I know I'm just appreciative that Councillor Deputon has commented the other on the day about having this document out before for proper review. The idea for tonight is so that we get through a really meaningful discussion for council, so that we understand the importance of this document, what it does, what we're doing. We're not expecting us to get through page by page, line by line of this, and then to get the idea of this is what we have in our zoning bylaw. This is the importance of the zoning bylaw to introduce James, so that we understand who James is, so that we're all having this really good conversation, so that we are all happy with what we have on board. And if we need to tweak some of the things that we want right now and discuss electric bentsies, densities, things like that, then we get through some of these more difficult conversations. We have that so that we can take this away and then really deep dive into ourselves, go back into the community, and then blend it back to get a DC, a DCC, that's because we're called DCCs. The zoning, let's not call DCCs. I didn't bring up. The zoning, the zoning bylaw itself is, in essence, never going to be a perfect document. It's always evolving, moving and changing. And the general direction that we felt, James and I and Joni and Zerces, and Christina, hi Christina, all felt is that it's never going to be a perfect document. But if you can get it really close to where it needs to be, so that we can get it out, so we can get it working in our community, then that's a really good place to do it. Otherwise, we're always going to be tweaking it, trying to make it better, and try to make it better. The old ones always going to be imperfect. So, there's not a rush to get it out, but we definitely need to try to get through this to make sure that this works appropriately. We did talk DCCs, James and I have discussed it on several occasions, but we'll get back around that. So, I appreciate the comments from council regarding that. But the idea tonight is to get this overall feeling of where we need to be at, of what we're going to do. A special note and mention on it is obviously Kevin Taylor. We've intentionally kept that in that. And the bylaw I thought was really important. James thought it was really important. Jamie before that also felt that that was a really nice touch. That was that, that my Jamie previously, wasn't just us. And also, our old CEO, Jeremy reached out and thanked us very much for that comment. He was really touched by that, as I mentioned on it as well. So, I think that would be something that we should, at least on the first page, I think is something we should definitely just look at and keep at, just as a start reminder of how much work was actually put in. So.
Thank you.
For you.
So, just. I appreciate the introduction of that sort of stuff. Before we sort of get into the details, for my perspective, we had a zoning bylaw. I don't know exactly how old it was. Maybe I should. But if we look at this new bylaw, how much of it has changed versus the last zoning bylaw? Like, is it 80% the same, or is it 80% new? Or, because if it's, a lot of it is similar, then maybe it's easier to read a redline version, where you just see the changes. Because if it is very incremental, then it's easier to focus on the changes instead of focusing on the things that have been in this bylaw for ages. We may enter into a discussion about this or that, but it's been in bylaw for so long. Can you give some litigation of that?
Through your worship, I would suggest that the bylaw is about 50% new. Because of the evolution and the items, topics we're trying to address, there is significant change, there's significant movement. We did have, do have a redline version, but it became all red. I'm afraid. So, yes, that's the reason we're presenting it as a new bylaw.
You're going to be talking to everyone, thank you.
Please. I wouldn't be in between yourself, myself, and the. I'm fine, thank you very much.
You sure?
Yeah.
Do you like a donut or a coffee?
Thank you. Okay, so, but that is a great place to start, which is you do have a zoning bylaw in place, and you do have a zoning bylaw that has worked for years, and you have a zoning bylaw that, as staff apply it over the years, they identify friction points and changes and things that they would like to see changed. And so, when our team started about three months ago, working with staff, there are 12 key areas that have been significantly changed. And it might be worth just rattling those off to be able to highlight the key changes that you're about to be introduced to. The first is around shipping containers and the use of shipping containers. You'll see that we have been very intentional about how they can be approved, where they can be used, what that looks like. As Zerces shared, we're trying to create a zoning bylaw that is permissive and allows people to do most things on their properties, but there are certain things that need to be protected and restricted. Shipping containers is one. And so, as we get to the discussion, there's very intentional language around shipping containers. The C1 legacy zone that was in place before, we felt it very important to introduce the concept of mixed use, the opportunity to have commercial or office on the main floor and residential above. This is, in the planning world, something that's taken off and really been very, very valuable for landowners for creating affordable and attainable housing. And so, you're going to see a significant effort towards creating mixed use in commercial dumps. Simplifying language around childcare facilities, one of the things to your CEO's point before about zoning bylaw changing, you probably know that the province has drastically changed their expectations of your zoning bylaw, their expectations with regards to infill housing and permissive development. And so, one of those includes childcare facilities. And so, we've staff have been very intentional around permitting and trying to facilitate more opportunities for childcare facilities. Tourism accommodations, obviously, short-term rentals has been a huge topic for conversation. And so, that's one of the areas that we wanted to be very specific and very clear and very current in terms of updating the bylaw to address those items. Home occupation, similarly, the opportunity for people to work from home has grown significantly in the last four or five years, and we want the zoning bylaw to reflect the opportunity that that is permitted, that that is acceptable, that that is encouraged. And yet, recognize that if you have a dozen customers a day, that's different than a use where you are primarily working from home without customers. So, home occupation is a big focus. Setbacks, standards, always important to make sure your zoning bylaw gives very clear direction on how you can use a lot and where that comes into play, but also around usable parcel areas. Not sure if staff have shared this in previous applications, but the bylaw presently has some conflicting language around of all lot sizes and where and when those lots can be subdivided. So, we aspire to clean that up and make that explicitly clear. We address beekeeping as an acceptable use and put some rules around that. And then, the discussion of mobile and modular homes is a key conversation going on around the province. And we wanted to make sure that the bylaw incorporated best practices with regards to allowing mobile and modular housing and under what conditions and what zones. Further, the use of duplexes. You have a zone currently that is specifically for duplex. We felt duplex and province felt duplexes are a very important housing form and are encouraging, if not requiring their acceptance in all zones. We'll find that we have expanded the use of duplexes into other zones. Added bicycle and electric vehicle parking. These are contentious topics, and yet, in trying to set up a bylaw that sets up a little bit for the future, it also is a matter of being aspirational and trying to take a step forward and putting in language and putting in opportunities for bike storage, bike parking, change reduced facilities, electric vehicle parking felt was an important step at this time. And so, we'll talk to some of those. And finally, reducing parking requirements is one of the key changes. And so, the opportunity to recognize that there are other modes of transportation, or other opportunities where people may live, work in a similar space and not need as many vehicles. And so, we've tried to relax, proposing to relax some of the parking requirements. So, that's our list of 12. That's our list of 12 key changes that we aspire to build into this bylaw. And with that, my hope was to take you through the bylaw and explain, share, show, and answer any questions you may have. You will notice that we left a spelling mistake, at least one in, just to make sure, see who was watching and catching it as we go through. So, you will see that our table of contents takes us through. And if you look at section 15, we will absolutely spell comprehensive appropriately. That's why we brought treats, right, as a thank you for the proofreading and the approach. As you see, Joe mentioned the dedication and the recognition of Kevin Taylor right up front in the zoning bylaw. The hope is that if this, we're, bylaw currently drafts it is January 1st, 2025, but this is absolutely council's discretion in terms of how much further, how many further changes, how much consultation timing. So, we're not saying January 1st is a hard date. We're saying that January 1st is the aspiration, and if we can do the consultation effectively and we can get general support, we'd like to be back to you in December for first and second. That's our timeline and our hope.
Your question was pretty hard.
It's a, this has been underway for years, and staff really have, I mean, I get to stand before you and take credit or blame pending, but they've been at this for years. I really think that they'd love to see the public feedback, at least see where we can get to.
You know who's going to get the blame if we make a mistake, though?
But that's why I'm here. But it's an important reminder that bylaws aren't static, right? This isn't a once every five year. This isn't a once, and you're locked in. So, the opportunity to continually evolve and fix, if I self-reserves you back here in front of you in February, trying to fix an oversight, we'll fix an oversight. You have the ability to keep it current and keep it moving. So, hopefully, it takes the pressure off of the need to get it right. Any good bylaw, we'll start off with how it applies, where it applies, and what it applies to. And so, the front end of your bylaw is largely the same as it was before, which is it applies to all land use buildings throughout the community. And so, it also then goes through and talks about what happens, who enforces, what the steps for enforcement are, and what the fines are. And so, I'm not sure if there were any questions or concerns with section one, but this is a very straightforward summary of staff have the ability to enforce the zoning bylaw. People must apply to the municipality to get approvals and changes under the zoning bylaw. And if they should fail to do it, there is the ability to enforce with penalties. So, section one, I.
Just had one question for 1.6.2, each day's continuance of an offense can consider new distinct offense. What does that mean?
It means that if, for example, you went and painted your building, sorry, if you went and put a structure in a setback, it's not allowed to be there. You can't just pay the $10,000 fine and all is good. Every day, bylaws can issue a fine. Every day, staff can come and fine again. And so, it's an important, and it's very common in other bylaws. It's not a one and done. It's every day that you continue to breach the bylaw, it constitutes an offense. Staff have some discretion in how they apply that, but it is, it's an important principle to have and try and implement. Just gives more flexibility to the enforcement. Seeing nothing else on section one? Section two, again, any legal documents, any bylaw of this nature certainly wants to go through and talk a bit about the interpretation, what has precedents, is it the words, is it the pictures, is it old versions, is it the map? How do we interpret the byline? So, this is very straightforward and in terms of the interpretation of the wording. Wasn't sure if there might be any questions or concerns with this, but it's, for example, the word shall and is are mandatory. I guess it just clarifies in the event of a dispute.
We have a, if our plan introduced a motion by law or something, that every new bylaw would be generally true. Is this, the language in this generally true?
Can you help me, sir? Yes, we did take that mine, and we did try to address to where possibly true language generally true.
Yeah, I noticed where they changed things to something.
Measurement and calculation similarly is just to set in the groundwork, particularly when we start talking about setbacks, or we start talking about how certain things are measured, particularly with regards to floor area. And so, I'm not sure if this is a, I'm sure you've seen many applications coming in looking at to deal with their floor area calculations, but it's a critical clarification around when you're building a building and you have maximum square footage, what is counted in that, what's not. For example, basements are not counted, hallways are not counted. And so, this bylaw very clearly articulates what is in the calculation, what is not in the calculation, and allows for what we hope will be a very uniform application of the bylaw. I don't know that there was a lot of change with regards to these sections, but these are industry standard. These are consistent across many municipalities. So, I don't, I didn't feel section three was contentious, but certainly opened any questions you may have. Love it. Now, we get, now we get into the real meat of what the zoning bylaw is here to do for your community and how it applies across your community. And so, I think when I counted, are there 16 different zones? And so, most of these are consistent with what was in place before. There are a couple of key changes that we'll highlight and talk to. But obviously, in the rural zones, you've got agricultural land that is in the agricultural land reserve. You've got agricultural land that's not in the land reserve, rural residential as your rural uses. Within residential, suburban, low-density infill, multi-unit, and manufactured home park are the five residential zones. Commercial has been streamlined, and this is one of the conversations I'd like to have as we get to that. The core commercial being a zone and shopping center commercial, having different rights and different obligations, different permissions, as two intentionally distinct zones. Within industrial, you've got two different zones, industrial and business industrial. Community zones, you've got parks and rec, as well as institutional, as well as conservation resources, as well as airport. And then, you do have a comprehensive development zone. And I would encourage you, as you're contemplating how you apply this zoning bylaw over time, the use of CD zones is really becoming less and less popular. There were years when every developer coming in would get their own, create their own zone. And the current best practice, the current approach really is not to create special deals for each property. The intent is to create a zone that is robust and applicable to a wide range of uses and try and avoid creating special one-off zones. So, in keeping with that, it's encouraging you have one, and you will have the choice as to whether or not you expand that in the future. But at the moment, there's only the one. And as we shared, the desire to allow and facilitate mixed use development. I know I was in the discussions 20 years ago where it was contentious, and people weren't sure, and will this ever fly? In fact, I can share with you that in certain communities, they're now mixing industrial and residential with some success, as long as they're very careful in how they do it. So, this is something that has been proven, has been used well, and has been very beneficial to the communities that apply mixed use. Interesting challenge, if you've ever changed zones or tried to close a road, knowing that the zone in fact goes to the middle of the highway, middle of the lane is important clarification that exists here under 4.3.1. And just again, clarifying how these zones apply and where they apply. So, anything on section four? Excellent. Section five, this is a very important area where we start getting into the connection between zoning and permissive land use as well as municipal servicing. And so, obviously, the availability of your water system and your wastewater system to support density and support growth and support buildings is very important. And so, this section really does talk significantly about expansion of services, the roads, the infrastructure required, and the connection to community water, and where possible, the connection to community wastewater as being a requirement of the zoning bylaw. Uses permitted in all zones, pleased to share that all zones allow for accessory buildings, accessory structures, childcare, community gardens. These are, this first section is a list of uses that is appropriate and allowable anywhere in your community in any of the zones. And so, it's a good list to review here under 5.5, but keep in mind that community care for not more than 10 persons, childcare, government office and buildings, public parking lot, solar energy devices, telecom towers, transportation corridors, trails, watershed protection. So, those are the uses, current list of uses that would be allowed in all zones. My understanding of this is not so much that we want them approved. It's that because those are under provincial or federal jurisdiction, my understanding is we don't have the opportunity to prohibit them under the Utilities Act.
Sometimes we don't have jurisdictions that develop. So, even although, sorry, through the mayor, even although we're looking at specific zones and accommodations and allowances, we are currently working a re through an application just now that even if we allow variances to reduce the lot sizes, and somebody wants to put two houses on that lot, we can do everything in our power to reduce that, allow that to happen. But because they don't have a hard time sewer to, interior health allowances wouldn't allow them to put two separate fields on it. So, although we can move all of our parameters around, there were certain things that we're not able to extract or to mitigate or to mitigate. But another important feedback from this is, James is also looking into, has been involved in our subdivision, subdivision service by law, which links all of our utilities, waters, sewers, how we count, how we can have links directly, and that's true. We're making sure that that all lines very, very clearly into something that's on. But good question.
Question here, actually, I can't see that. But here in uses for zones, 5.613, stockpiling of storage materials, does that include firewood?
A good question. It's not defined. I don't think it's clarified anywhere. It's a good point. You can easily clarify.
So, stockpiling of storage of materials, explosive fuels, does that include?
And no issue. Sorry.
No, we're going to understand, Joe.
It would not be common to prohibit it. It's not intended to prohibit it, so we will take it away, but I anticipate we can resolve that very easily. But yes, there are three things that are prohibited in all zones. Derelict motor vehicles, which typically means unlicensed. Any excavation, that doesn't mean you can't have an excavation. It means you can't leave an excavation, can't just dig a hole and leave it there. And then, stockpiling, with the exception of firewood, explosive flammable materials, firewood being flammable, I can see where your question comes from, diesel fuel and gasoline products not permitted in any zone.
Okay, but I have a question on that actually, that, I mean, we all stockpile things like gasoline products, right? I mean, you've got lawnmowers, you've got oil, they've got, like, there's a lot of things that are stockpiled, especially on larger properties, where there's availability to do so.
There are properties who have small little tanks in the back on stilts for doing their small long tractors or especially operating.
Storage of materials, there's lots of places that have metal, you know.
I think the clarification that could make this workable is to indicate that, you know, unless used for heating or other allowable uses or something like that, where the diesel fuel is used to fuel tractors on agricultural properties or gasoline products or being. the diesel fuel is used to fuel tractors on agricultural properties or gasoline products or the personal use. It could be, you know, it could be fuel for a forklift at the, at the shopping center. That's not personal use, that's business use, right? So it could be agriculture use, business use or personal use, but there has to be use. Can't just be stockpiled there and left there like, you know, they're like motor vehicles that are stockpiled for no purpose.
Other than parts. Yeah. So is this, this, the whole 5.6.1.3, is that a QC code or is that?
This is your, your zoning by law, you, you are, we are able to wordsmith this for you and address this. You could, you could remove it altogether. However, I would encourage you to consider the intent, which is if I'm on my R1 single family home, I shouldn't have eight drums of, of oil being stored. So there, there needs to be an appropriate way to address the concerns that you can use certain things on your property, but not use it to stockpile or store it. And maybe that is the, the key here, which is stockpiling and storing implies one thing, whereas if it's there for use. So I'd, I'd like to suggest we can take away words method.
Just one, one question. What? What is a derelict motor vehicle? How is that defined? Because we have a lot of car enthusiasts here who have different bodies of cars that they're working on, they're restoring, they may sit there for a while because they're doing parts, so what?
I'm curious if it is a defined term, it wasn't capitalized. And so I'm wondering if we have derelict as, as defined typically it's unlicensed is the, is the component to that, which is if yes, you have a hobby vehicle, but it's unlicensed. Shouldn't have parts strewn all over your lawn. Derelict often is, doesn't run, can't drive. Happy to, happy to have that defined for, for clarification.
We'd have some very, very unhappy.
Yeah, absolutely.
It could be in the process of changing.
I'll be through the chair. I think I've asked recently. Your definition of derelict is a unroadworthy. So if this gets smashed headlights and it's the wheels off it and it's up in jacks and it's been sent there and it's covered in weeds and it's just getting used as a garbage dump. That's, that's, that's the way it should be. If it's a model B Ford, it's in something shared and it's an antique and it says a decoration and it's got a patina and it's rusty, but it's attractive looking and it's not just left to the abandoned and it's placed out there. Then I think that's reasonable. I think the same thing applies if we're looking at the, the engines we to a farm or an agricultural area. Just get a couple of antique tractors on, on that, that would be considered as derelict. I think that would be considered as either a form of art or a form of decoration. 19, a 1997 green Chevy pickup truck on its side with wheels off of it. I'll take that one in. But if that was sitting in your yard and it was sitting next to somebody else's yard, that's not an antique. Oh yeah, it's coming there. But that wouldn't be an antique. That would be something that would either have to be worked, working on. And I can drive it around, but if it was just been left abandoned there. Then I think, I think our by law officer would then have that type latitude to look at it and say, right, okay, that's something that the guys are working on. You know, there's a bit of coming, a bit of give and take on that one as well, but I think we've created a definition.
I definitely think that that one should be massaged because there are people that I know that have four or five vehicles there and they work on them as, as for parts or use them for parts. To me, I think they're junk, but they clearly do not think they're junk. And there's other people that we both agree that they're junk, but they're still sitting there in the yard. So I don't know how to massage that.
Such a stock car racing.
Yeah, and there's four or five in the yard.
And yeah, and there's four or five of them that you're taking parts off all the time because
Exactly.
no money in stock car racing, it's just a bunch of fun.
But beauty can be high of the beholder.
Exactly, it is.
Some guy might want a 97 Chevy on its side.
That's what I mean, has like saving it for a mirror or something.
In some cases.
So we're suggesting to take this out?
To massage it, we're just making it a little bit
That we get it.
More comfortable to build a lot of different properties.
Can we have a, somewhere, either this by law or some other by law has something about unsightly properties? That could be applied.
Yep.
And more broadly, you say, listen, you know, if you got a bunch of cars that are on site or, you know, it's, it is a an eyesore, which can then be not this particular by law, but the unsightly by, unsightly is different than because it, it speaks more to the visual aesthetics than to the actual object.
Absolutely. And through the mayor, we, we've done this before in different areas as well. And it may be pertaining to some of this, the fuel questions as well. If there's a fire risk, then you're not loading up five quarks of wood underneath your basement. And that's not appropriate because it's a fire risk. So we do, we can look at how this like side of the law looks as well and make sure that the definitions are a little bit more broad. And staff have the latitude to make sure that the systems.
Yeah, I think this was mentioned further.
In some municipalities, staff creating a policy or even a council policy is, is the next level of implementation. And certainly will take away kind of, kind of, sorry for the word. When we get to 5.6.2, this section is really just trying to draw attention to the fact that these are regulated uses and permitted in some and not. So the wording except is set as otherwise explicitly permitted in the zone, these things are prohibited. And you can probably appreciate that there are reasons why. Sorry, 5.6.2. Why these uses are ones that the zoning by law wants to, to control or otherwise have a say in.
Just a question, I don't know anything about this, but storage of explosives, I would assume that we've got like few contractors here that they would have special permits to be able to store that on on site. So this would be more for the enthusiasts to, things they need to light up the sky.
Precisely. So this, this highlights the fact the storage of explosives is otherwise prohibited. And I'm counting on when we get to the industrial section, you'll see the exemption of where it's permitted. But, but that in other zones, no, your neighbor in your residential zone should not be storing explosive. Similarly, we get to, sorry. As we get to 5.6.3, highlighting that certain things are managed by the province or the federal government. And so, so identifying that these uses are subject to those permits and permissions. As we get to 5.7, this, we start getting into parking and, and vehicles more specifically. And so, for example, 5.7.2.1 exterior parking in residential zones is prohibiting more than one unlicensed vehicle. So this is where it specifically is allowing for you can have, you can have one unlicensed vehicle, you can be working on it, you can be fixing it and be doing whatever you need to do. Discussion of temporary uses is a very important one. In fact, staff were doing one just earlier this week. What is permitted during construction? What is permitted during renovation, during a build? And so this is a section that's, that's quite important. There's one in fact here on campaign headquarters, but it's, it's the use of temporary building, storage shelters, this type of thing. Shipping containers for moving or emergency purposes. And so anyways, yes, temporary, temporary uses outlined in the by law. Continue. Access, talking about driveway crossings and access to the, to the ministry of transportation highways. As I'm sure you're aware, the ministry of transportation grants access permits and is, is, is very important that commercial properties be directed to the ministry of transportation. So that's why that is, exists and why that is in there.
I'm sorry, can we just back up for one minute?
Sure.
Sorry. Back to prohibited 5.7.2. Unlicensed trailer or recreational vehicles. Quite a few people only register and license their trailers or whatever for their actual season that they're using it. So would that include that or that you previously have and you've let it lapse for six months because you haven't used it six months and they're here.
My interpretation of this is that outside of your home, on your property, you may only have up to two unlicensed recreation vehicles. So yes, if somebody had more than that, they would, they would be contributing the section of the by law.
That shouldn't change because somebody's got a couple snowmobiles. I see you, boat.
Yeah.
Side by side.
You have to license those.
But they're not licensed all the time.
A trailer license is $38 a year.
No, if you have insurance and stuff on it.
No, 38 bucks. If you have a couple. If you, one trailer, one trailer will haul everything, but different seasons it will.
So can we look at that one? Can we pull that one?
Absolutely.
James.
So look through the mirror, what are we thinking again? So is this, if I introduce the residential zones more than, let's just look at 5.7 to the more than two recreational vehicles.
Yeah, and yeah, and then unlicensed trailer, I mean, is that a?
RV trailer or a dump trailer or a car trailer or? Because I know in my household, we have an RV trailer, we have a dump trailer, we have a boat trailer. So what exactly?
We have a boat trailer, we have a car trailer, we have, yeah.
Are they all registered?
The RV is licensed when we go to music because I change.
Perhaps we can take that away. I, I hear you and I agree, there should be an easy way to, to make that. In fact, I'd argue that recreational vehicle was not intended to get skidoos, snowmobiles, whatever. I would suspect recreation vehicles were intended to be RVs.
Yeah.
However, clarifying that is important because the interpretation is key. So please, we will, yes, we will address that.
There is, like, there's different differences in residential zones within the community. Like if we're starting to see four unlicensed vehicles, trailers or whatever, some small lots on Victoria, Columbia. That's going to go on show. That is, that is, that is not what we want, right? Or even on, on, where's the? Eagles and crescents, which are small lots, right? On the VLA, you know, you got two acre lots you could Sir, the half far, the half far, you got two acre lots. Again, the VLA is, is medium sized, yeah. Can we relate this to the size of a lot? Can we?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, you've got a five, five acre lot. I mean, if you could have, you know, you could hide all of these things and no one would notice. But Columbia where you have the trailers and the parking in front is just, there, there's not a lot of parking and they start putting like I said, is that the town that you want?
Good point. It would get stolen anyway, so.
Well, I just have a question about storage, like that storage place over there, does it accommodate? If somebody wanted to park their boat and trailer over there or their camper or their motorhome, does anybody know?
Well, maybe it's small.
Well, busy. Might be an interesting business for someone.
And we can maybe go with lot size or whatever, or take that supply over here.
Yeah. That's fine too.
Good catch. Okay. So can we do definitions? Just peel it down a little bit. You have a specific zoning or a specific lot size?
Absolutely, we can. I mean, the difference between rural residential and residential is a, is a very easy one to, to utilize. But yes, based on lot size or, or change numbers, we will, we will find a solution to that.
Because there is down VLA too, there is one acre lots down there, there's a whole suburb side of one acre lots.
We also be that you put that kind of definition in there some way. So.
If I may. So is the designation. As opposed. Okay. The specific zone, residential. This is the correct existing.
Okay, so. So.
Thank you. Are we all saying that you put something in line? Unless then I get a shot. Now I'm just thinking, have you got a large shop? So for example, potentially we've just got a shop and she's got a couple of motorcycles inside that shop that are unregistered, unlicensed. Even unless they're off the street and they're covered or authority. Outside of our mind. I mean, when I'm staying just now, they've got a couple of different recreational vehicles that they use and utilize. And various different states, we bring them in, we fear them and then sell them on just as a hobby. So is there something that we can look at just to look at?
Absolutely. I, I agree that there's a massive difference between anything that's inside a structure and, and it, yeah, it really is, the intent of this is really to deal with exterior yards, but yes, we'll, we'll draw that distinction.
5.29?
Yeah.
I was hoping to get to 5.10. So are we, where, where would you like to go outside?
Yeah, no, I still got some more to do. We were just talking about inside storage and that's further out.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we, if we're comfortable, then I'm at 5.10 accessory uses? So the, the The opportunity to, to allow for and permit accessory uses and it is an important part of where the province is wanting municipalities to go with regards to other uses on the property. And so this is a very clear way to define how that counts towards floor area. What, what it means in terms of square footage and, and how it applies, particularly including heights of buildings and, and and structures and such. So didn't know if there's anything on accessory uses, but that's section 5.10. 5.11 deals specifically with agricultural land reserve buffers, as you, I'm sure are familiar, the, the land commission describes what a buffer shouldn't be and how that should look. And so this is mirroring their expectations. And as probably came in the last five or eight years, the, the regulation of cannabis production is aggressive.
Sorry, on ALR buffer, yeah. Does it have any implication for industrial? So what, what is the implication of the buffer? Is it, does it have implications for the agricultural end or the, the industrial or residential that's next to it?
It, it has everything to do with the use next to agricultural.
So including industrial?
Yes. And there are ways to, to narrow the buffer as this is describing, you can get it down from the 15 meters, but, but predominantly the standard expectation is a 15 meter buffer.
Yeah, I think those buffer zones are too, too wide. It's because, because of I don't think they need to be 15 meters, but she was just 30, 30 feet.
45.
Or 45 feet, like to like 50, yeah, 45, most of 50. That's a huge area. That you can't use.
I have mounted the same argument. I have not been successful in convincing the land commission to, to soften. So do you have any insight perhaps on, I believe this is directly out of the provincial requirements. So I don't, I don't think we are tightening or making it any more restrictive. But I don't know that we can, we can stay silent on it, but I don't think we can permit anything less. As it conflicts with the province. I hear you and I agree. I just can't. Well, sorry, they're not, the farming land is, the, the ALC land is not impacted. It is the adjacent use that is not farming, that is, that they want to keep residential uses in particular away from where cherry crop or other sprays or other pesticides may be used. So it's, it's absolutely on the land next to the ALC agricultural land.
It's ALC too, because I read these ALC also.
Okay.
And if that, sorry, through the mayor, and if that is reduced to the province and the by law states, that's, can we remove that's currently, I just think, conform with cover regulations?
Yes, the challenge is that as bank staff then go to try and enforce it. It's not a little by law, so it, but yes, that is, there's a potential approach. So why don't we, we'll take it away.
Just thinking that we've been doing a combined amendment, which is if they reduce it to 30 feet or if the, any of these stuff, we don't know what they need to do, but we have that as a kind of we need to keep up to date with it, but that would just be something to look into. They really need to keep up to date with it, but that would just be something to look into.
I think that's good with.
So what you're saying is taking out the actual fifteen meters and just leaving it to, uh, to conform with the provincial government regulations. And go for that. Okay.
Sorry. So what is the buffer? Like, what is a buffer zone?
A buffer zone traditionally is a, is a, is a fallow strip that nothing happens within. And so it's, you can in fact put a road, you can input, put back the planting, but you can't have a building, you can't have a residence, you can't have anybody living. Or, or operating in that space. Now there are, land commission does have opportunities that if you use a fencing or, or, um, or plantings. To protect against the nae overspray that that buffer can be reduced. And you can see that we've got one here that allows for nine meters. There are, there are ways to, it's, it's supposed to be a separation of any building from, from the property line.
Building.
Okay. Yeah. The bylaw then goes on to talk through concepts like cannabis production, cooking facilities, drainage and fencing. For example, no fence shall exceed one point eight meters in height, except is, is fairly typical in, in many municipalities. In fact, sometimes it's one point five meters, even, even shorter.
One point eight meters.
Six feet, I'm out of this.
That's about the work here, isn't it?
Okay.
There's no mention of electric fencing.
I didn't think we were that far yet. I thought I was still on cannabis here.
Yeah, no, you just hit fencing. No, not me.
My fault. I will be more patient as we go through. So, uh, perhaps if we worship, if I may, can we, let's certify twelve cannabis. Was there comments around?
No, I just, you were talking about cannabis and then cooking and I'm like, okay, now I'm. My mind went somewhere else.
Apologies, under five twelve, what we're doing is we're flagging, the land commission, uh, brought in some, some, um, very intentional rules around cannabis production, where it can be, when, where can't. Floors and such, and we're just flagging that, that the, their regulation is the one that governs. Five thirteen cooking, um, suggesting that. Cooking facility should be within the primary dwelling unit. Uh, but on larger lots, there are more flexibilities afforded to, to a landowner.
So you could have like an compensatory. So you could have like an outdoor kitchen or something if you had multiple dwellings.
That I think that is, is the situation this, this clause is trying to address, which is the, the, um. One secondary cooking facility is permitted. Where single family dwelling is permitted, uses a second. Sorry, where single family dwelling is permitted, use a secondary cooking facility, uh, is permitted to be located within the primary dwelling. So the intent is that on, on that lot, um. It's inside the building unless you have a two hundred thousand, two, two thousand square meter lot, then you have the ability to have an outdoor kitchen.
So it has to be a two thousand square foot lot. So I can't have. My, my home and say I live on a smaller lot where I built a little pool at the back and I can't have a little outdoor. Barbecue that's a permanent barbecue like that.
Like a built in.
Like a built in.
So my, if I, through your worship, if I may, the, the beautiful part about, uh, questions like this is it, it causes us to go in and dig deeper into the bylaw and because cooking facility is capitalized. I'm confident that I'm about to find cooking facility. Did you get them? Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, cooking facility specifically means facilities for the storage, preparation or cooking of food and includes. Any room and containing counters, cabinets, sinks, stove, dishwashers, any other appliances, plumbing or wiring that may be intended. Or used for the preparation of cooking of food, but excludes a wet bar. So wet bar is separate, but yes, the interpretation then is that an outdoor pizza oven, for example, or outdoor cooking facilities of any kind is. On a, on a small lot is intended to be inside the primaries. It's like.
And those kinds of.
Scratch.
I don't feel good about it because it's got, I mechanically inside, sorry. I don't. So. It needs to be. I think a few people do things that's.
For sure.
There's going to be lots of this stuff that we're missing there. It's just like the fence sites. Deer.
If I may, the, the, one of the beautiful parts about applying a zoning bylaw is the people can come to council for variances. And so in certain conditions, when somebody wants to have, uh, a catering business and have a ten thousand square foot outdoor kitchen, they can come to you and ask for permission, but the default is prohibited. As opposed to it's permitted everywhere and then you have a problem because there's no way to enforce it. And so I would, I would encourage you to be. Mindful of when you strip something out, what is the, if somebody were to take it to an extreme, what are you allowing to be permitted? Uh, because at the moment, any person that. Has an issue with this can come and apply for variance to get it legalized.
And we just think that this would be, uh, expected if, if I have a yard and I got a pool up to jump, but it doesn't matter if I had that and, and I wanted an outdoor area for cooking. Or canning or doing whatever, I should be allowed to do that in my own yard and I would be, I would expect. That I wouldn't have to go down to the district and get a, come here with a variance and get a bylaw to do so.
A five hundred dollar variance.
Exactly. So that, that becomes an issue to me and I think that would become an issue to a lot of people at council.
Um, but could you get around that by doing it for personal use or whatever? Cause I understand where commercial is getting commercial. You loosen up this and then suddenly somebody is hosting destination rural weddings in their backyard because. And you're on a farm.
And.
Yeah, but if it was more for personal use for your outdoor kitchen, for your pizza oven and whatever there.
Yeah, like you through the mirror, I think that's the, that's the idea, just the intention, but let's, I like this. I think this is, this all go in the right direction. We're, we're meant to be doing this. I know this may feel uncomfortable because we're trying to chew this down, but this is exactly what we're meant to be doing. This is the definitely keep this going like this. And this is what we're going to do with electric fences, fence heights. Like, we need to understand that what we're going to be doing here is we're trying to deal with. The people that can just do what they want and take it to the absolute truth. And that's what we need to try and live it without sounding silly ourselves. And that's why these bylaws take years, like literally years to get through, because people get stuck on alleged fences. So I, I agree. I think we take that way, listen to what we're thinking about, could you be allowed kitchen stove?
Anything else on five thirteen cooking facilities? Drainage, you're enduring my heart merely pointing that development must reflect the subdivision of service and bylaw.
I'm just going to think for just a second, uh, we had draining, we had, uh, oil separators, draining and industrial, did we take that out? Sorry, that industrial. I know I'm looking. Yeah, we had it for industrial properties and it was our drainage and it was oil separators that needed to be put in place. So it was. The brewery was the last one and the pub, the, um, yeah. So I'm just wondering if those are still in because we don't have any, any properties, any, um, parcels that have an oil water separator. And yet it was in our bylaw a few years back.
I'll have to get back to you and review the subdivision service by law.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, thank you through the mirror. Is that not something that we do look at in our subdivision service by law specifically with? A, like if our service and for sewer, for sewer, like our sewer allowances, yes, see for example, we're going to have a, a new restaurant. That would be one of the requirements and we would absolutely insist on it as well as spaghetti juices. So. One of the examples that we had was a bottle washing facility for a dairy product. They weren't able to dump the washings of the bottle down the drain because it was a dairy product and it was no, or sewer plant. So there's very, very specifics within the subdivision and service by law and in and around what we'll accept and what can be treated, be done before that. So that would be captured. Okay.
Right. And what I was just referring to is that the lots that were like the brewery would park cars.
Yeah.
So they all had to drain into. Thank you.
I understand fencing is a contentious topic. Uh, where would we like to start on, on this section on fence?
On the, the height restriction on fencing? I don't think there should be one. Eight feet, eight feet minimum. They may not put a maximum on it.
Max.
Well, that's what you, you're, well, but that's for agricultural property.
Okay.
People. Trying to keep deer.
All right. So you're talking residential property and a maximum of eight feet. Is, I don't even know if that's allowed.
I don't know. What, what is it? Eight feet or ten feet for deer? Deer fencing.
Well, I think if it's solid, it's, you know, I'm going to go to councillor first.
Well, I can just, I was just going to say, um, I, I agreed with councillor McNary about being more than six feet. My one example in residential is you can have a wonderful, well maintained fence. And your neighbor can have cedars which are twelve feet high and half dead and everything else, but. That is allowed to have a fence made of cedar trees. Um, but you can't have a actual fence that comes any higher than six feet.
Okay. Uh, councillor De Bruin?
Yeah, but five fifteen point six says a deer fence may be placed on top of the fence. A fence as defined, I think we hear is a. Closed fence, not a, not a chain link or not a, you know, like a, what we consider in agriculture, a deer fence, which is wire, right? And wires enough to keep deer out. But here it indicates it cannot have a wooden fence that cannot see through more than have one point six meters. You can build, that's what I've done, right? My residential property, I have a one, a one point six meters or whatever, whatever it is, I have a six feet. So one point eight, I have a six feet fence. And I put wires over top so that deer don't jump. And that's what, what is allowed, right? So that the, the enclosure, the closed portion that we cannot see through is only six feet. So that you don't block the view from your neighbors or that they can still enjoy, you know, looking at the views that we have. Because someone built a fence, an eight feet fence, because that will start blocking the view, particularly not on your property. If you start looking at the higher density property, if you put an eight foot fence, then the people on the, on the ground floor cannot see out there. They can't see air and that sort of stuff. So that's why they said it, you make it six feet, then you put another two feet on top. That is wire to keep the deer out. That's what five fifteen point six.
I'm going to go to, oh, that's. No, which I understand that, but then going back to your cedar trees, anybody can put any cedar tree fence down the side. It's going to go twelve, sixteen feet and therefore it goes to your neighbor's view that way, but that's allowed.
Well, but, but, but I think you have a good point. Sorry.
I think you might have a good point, but yeah, we got.
I, I think the, uh, the landscape, like other than fencing, landscape, whatever, how you phrase it or, or. Whether it's a cedar tree or whatever natural things that will, you know, uh, block people's views and enjoyment of their property. May, may be addressed in here, but I'm sure it should be addressed, uh, particularly beyond just fencing. And it will be able to set kitchen fence. So I would want to say, because you can have cedar trees at one feet tall, therefore you can have a fence toward a feet tall.
Barrier.
Right. So we put both.
Do you have any recommendations from other communities that have had this come on?
Six foot fences are pretty much across all municipalities. The intent being in driving through some of the, the streets I did today, uh, for the narrow right of ways, if you go much higher, you end up potentially blocking in a corridor. Yes, there are, there are plantings and trees that grow higher, but, but the standard across almost every municipality I've checked is six foot is the, is typical.
Through the mirror, I just wanted to say that, um, the cedars are one of the prohibited ones in the fire smart program. Like they, they will pay you to take them out, you know, I don't know if your neighbors live there full time, hopefully not. I know where you're thinking. I, I know where the trees are, but yeah, I have the same thing at mine and we try to just keep them locked off.
Yeah, thank you through the mirror. Uh, the other thing as well is, uh, uh, cedar headies will take the definition of landscape and in hedges versus fences, but I appreciate that. They, they do the same thing and one is ten times taller. Uh, the other thing is that. Cedar hedges or hedges or any sort of, so chameleons of Paris or anything that uses as a hedge takes them to Canada. Or people move it and it's there. Uh, and if it is a fire risk, then we can deal with it. If it's unsightly, we can deal with it. We can address it if it's dangerous or dangerous trees. We can deal with that as well. A fence can work with that. Uh, and typically, the largest conflicts, James, please fly in here. The largest conflicts are on the boundary edges of rivers. And fences are used and weaponized between neighbors, not on large properties of land, but in conflicts. Neighbors will take each other to court on who gets the good looking side of a fence. Kind of stuff, you know, it's like, I don't want the hardware of my side of the fence. I want the structure of your side of the fence and they will negotiate on, they will get it. Back to middle, mid, mid down each millimeter on what they're doing. And if we allow massive fences. Then people will weaponize them. And if you've got conflict with your neighbor, if I had a conflict with you and that you're my neighbor and I don't like looking at your Chevy, you know, like looking at my Ford. I'm going to put up a Ford with fence. It's going to go up the next day. And it causes and then trending problems. We do have issues and problems, cedar hedges, fences, we've dealt with those conflicts in the past. We see them regularly.
There's currently.
Yeah, yeah, there is currently, you're completely right. There's common conflicts with that just now. So, uh, there's other means and tools to do with that. Fences are an immediate thing and they do get weaponized. Uh, and I don't use that term lightly. They do get weaponized and people build stupid fences. Out of stupid materials like pallets and blue pallet fences and make them really ugly on your neighbor's side of the fence. And then they put a really attractive fence on your side as they can, as they can, as events. So the definition in this, if you've got to look at some of these bylaws, especially this bylaw, look at it as if you're the most. Bondescending, aggressive neighbor that you're going to deal with and they're going to use, utilize that potentially. And you're trying to protect the good citizen from not having that ability. But fences walk back, edges stay there for a long time.
Okay. And then we passed a bylaw that we are allowed to have electric fences for deer purposes. No, that, that bylaw is in discussion. Okay. Well, it's in discussion. So. Where did we get to? Any?
Nowhere.
Nowhere. Okay. Well, so could be potentially coming is the, is the something that we should, uh. Write in here or think about now so that we don't have to change it when it does come, or maybe we should just bring it to council before.
Three thoughts if I may, through your worship. Uh, first, this is your bylaw. You can make, as long as it doesn't conflict with the province, you can make it any way you want. So if it's your will. My second thought is I would encourage that one to be part of the, the consultation with the stakeholders. This is the opportunity to put things to the, the users, the residents, whomever, and gain feedback. And so if, if we can certainly make that one of the questions. But three, yes, wherever council lands on this item, it should be reflected in this bylaw. So whatever you choose to do, let's, let's build it in. So my thoughts.
Uh, through the mirror, it was or is our current zoning bylaw that was the discussion form. So.
Yeah. Very good.
Oh, councillor, sorry, through the mirror.
I get the 1.8 meter fence or whatever, but now if you have a pool in your backyard, does that fence need to be taller than that to keep kids and whatnot out? They're supposed to be fenced.
Through your worship, my understanding around pools is a six, six foot is the minimum around the pool. I have not seen anything higher than that, but I will confirm before it goes any further. But, but yes, my understanding is that's.
Pardon me? That's the one.
That should go a bit higher.
I think too.
Unless there's anything else on fences. Five sixteen moves into flood construction requirements. This also is something that is regulated by the province and typically ends up in a building bylaw as well. But it brings attention to where a building is allowed to be built and not allowed to be built. And this is a very relevant topic with recent events. So I'm not sure if there are any questions or discussion on, on that. But just ensuring that a habitable space is above flood, flood elevation. Building height, clear, it's very important to define where the height of a building is measured from. So today, flipping of the roofs and how that's measured and how that's applied, these are fairly standard. Applied across different municipalities. Similarly, height exemptions and things that wouldn't count against the height of a, of a, of a building. I don't know if there's any questions on five eighteen, but otherwise. Five nineteen lighting. Dark sky approach to, to not lighting things up and having it glowing all night long is, is the new respectful and energy efficient approach. So the small section here on, on how lighting is intended to be applied, downcast, projected onto the building.
Okay. So I have a question about that one. So we have lighting at our place that we were broken into, Rob, blah, blah, blah. So our lighting tends to be a little bit more brighter and it's not reflected down towards the building. It's reflected to the lawn and the surrounding yard. So we have an anchor. So we're just on the ground. But in, in our day and age, let's say, I think that regular enters and safety of the residents, if they want to light up their yard, I think that they should be able to. I mean, councillor De Bruin.
It says where lighting is not for emergency egress or other safety measures. Lighting must be. So if your lighting is for safety measures, then you can do whatever you want. So this is only for landscape lighting.
What's the definition of the safety measure?
Yeah. So it's. I mean, I would argue that, but I don't.
Through your worship, I would argue that, that lighting is not always dealt with in a zoning bylaw. This, this isn't usually the definitive pass or fail. Where it's a building bylaw typically that, that addresses these, the lighting. I think it's valuable to have in here, whether you would choose to remove it or soften the language is totally your curvy, but you can.
You want to keep it?
I would keep it.
Can we go what's in our building by law? Is that around lighting? Does this sync with what's in there or does it reflect or? Because if it's in two things at the same time. So maybe, maybe that's something I take away to sort of see that this is not more restrictive or less restrictive than the building or but there's no overlap on depending on what comes out.
Through your worship, I'd be happy to follow up with the building official and to confirm that. Five twenty is, it seems innocuous and yet it actually is. Sorry.
So, and this is a really silly question. Is that then also taking consideration of Christmas lights? That's a silly question. Some people go, yes, kind of hammer and tong with the Christmas lights.
Yes.
So are we affecting people from having Christmas lights potentially on?
The application, through your worship, yes, the application is broad and the wording is, is explicit. If it's not for emergency egress or safety, and maybe I could argue that. But it must be downcast downward or onto the building. But you're right, having a 30 foot snowman with strobe lights is, would be prohibited under this bylaw.
Okay.
I was going to say, I mean, I was going to kill Christmas there with the cheerful.
Okay. We'll take that away and get into it. Five twenty has to do with if you're drop, if you're demolishing a building. Can you live in the building that's already there? It's an important transition piece. Some municipalities crack down, prohibit it. And as a result, you have to move off of your property while you're having a house built. My own personal preference is better reflected in what five twenty says here, which is you, you with the security deposit, decommissioning plan and commitments to remove the structure, you are allowed to keep the structure while you build the new. So I have to chat on that if anybody would like, but I believe this is an important part of transitioning a property.
Did you, does it allow a holiday trailer or something like that?
Um. No.
I would consider that very important.
We've seen that work really successfully by having a very clear defined tagline on it. And then also having confirmation for certain water ages to make sure that they're not just dumped on the ground and such like. And you've seen that really working really, really well. Now the idea is where people would bring it in. Go and watch for a change with it. You know, I mean, it's good because contractors can use that as well. If a contractor presenting wants to utilize that, that works really well. But if you're driving through letting just now, you've seen it. There's like five holiday trailers on one hole. The balance that actually had on it for sure. But yeah, that was, that was my question as well. If we can utilize the, the type of trailer getting brought on for the limited time key to the building. And then like that is wrong.
I could do, just look into that most. Five twenty one discusses projections and setbacks. These are fairly standard with regards to chimneys and gutters and ramps and eaves. They need to be explicit. Otherwise builders sometimes push the limits of what's intended. And so it's being explicit is helpful. I don't know if there's any discussion on five twenty one. Five twenty two is recreational vehicles. And yes, this is a, this is a critical component and one that we did spend a fair bit of time talking about and thinking about in terms of what's appropriate and what's, what's, what should be prohibited, what should be protected and how this should work. Yes, an RV is permitted.
Um, yeah, this sort of goes back to previously. But yeah, as for the definition of a recreational vehicle, because I know this is, I'm assuming this is looking more at like an RV. But when you actually do a search on what a recreational vehicle is, that includes ATVs, motorbike, side by sides and everything. So if we're looking at just a RV as a camper or a fitter or something like that, I think it should be more defined. There is a definition.
So through your worship, at the back here, recreational vehicle, so this is a long one, bear with me. Motor vehicle or trailer, which may be CSA certified Z four two forty one equipped with temporary living space amenities found in that. But not a mobile home or other form of permit volume or a vehicle designed to be towed behind a motor vehicle, self propelled. Trailers, fifth wheels, campers, pickup coaches, motorhomes, park models, other similar vehicles. So yes, it's a very broad definition of recreation.
So, 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 so in actual fact, that stops people from living in like. Like if there was some parents and their, their kid was having problems needing a place to stay for a while, they couldn't live in a motorhome up the back for a lengthy period of time or what is, what does that actually mean?
Correct. Through your worship, the, the intent is you are allowed to park a recreation vehicle on your property. Absolutely. And you have the ability to have one on your property. No recreational vehicle is permitted to be connected directly to municipal sewage system or municipal water system. So it means that it can't be connected to services. And typically I thought there was a 30 day allowance. Yeah, five twenty two for not, not exceeding 30 days in one year shall be used for temporary accommodation of a guest or visitor. So yes, to your point, the, the intent is no, you're not living in a recreation vehicle on a lot.
Yeah.
There are other intentions behind that. I could also land as well. They're allowing agricultural land and then the agricultural land actually allows you to set RVs on the property. Specifically camping or getting to be camped as well. There's different regulations under the law as well, which is a lot unusual. But I suppose it's the size of the lot would work largely.
Yeah, I, I just think into some people, you know, they, they have a place and they don't, and the rentals are far and few between here and you've got no place to go other than, than a holiday trailer sitting in, in the driveway of their parents' place or something to that effect. Should we be stopping that? Not sure. And that's, that's what this is doing, eh? Like you can, we're not cologne or anything. We're pretty brutal. And how, how fast do we need to change?
Through your worship, I am empathetic. I have two teenage, two teenage kids and I don't think they're ever leaving the house. So that's the, you know. I know that NACUS did a pilot project for two years allowing for living in recreation vehicles. And I would encourage council to be careful around this one because you could very quickly end up with with an RV on every driveway lived in permanently full time.
A rental.
Rental. Thank you. So again, I come back to this, we're trying to permit a whole lot of uses on lands. Yes, this is one area that is prohibitive and it's council's discretion. You can put it any way you'd like, but just my heart goes out to the individual, the challenges, we know I'd basis, what should the rule be for the whole community?
Um, a sort of similar thing there, but not exceeding 30 days. I know where this is coming from, where that you're not wanting people to be staying there all year long. But then I'm thinking too of summer and I'm thinking of contractors and working in that family who comes to stay. Is there something like, and I totally understand the 30 day limit, but is there something not that I'm wanting to do more permitting or anything? But if you did have someone who was working, say, and they're going to be there for a three month period. If it's a matter of saying, okay, we're going to have this family member in our trailer for three months. Is that something that could be put into bylaw or it's just accommodation is so flux right now as well. And so you've got people coming and going and yeah, you don't want, you don't want them there for more than 30 days. But in some cases, someone may have to stay in a trailer for two months or something.
Councillor De Bruin.
We have a number of RV parts within the district that are used exactly for that purpose. There's contractors there for months. But it means that they're full hookups. So there's sewer and everything's taken care. And in someone's driveway, we have put someone there in an RV for six months. There's no sewer hookup. There is no proper electrical supplies to it. So it is, I think, if there is a lot of demand for RV parts, then we'll see some more RV parts. And I think that the one that we, that was, that was built up on top of Moho, it's always booked. And it's, you know, it's a great solution for exactly what you're talking about. But I just don't think that we should allow people live in people's driveways. Or, and again, it's going to open it up that we are going to rent out their RV for people living their, their, their driveway. And because who's going to go and check where that, you know, is that person related? Like, is it, you know, is it family or is it you, right? I don't think there's, I think we'll be opening ourselves up to some unwanted situations.
I think it's already happening. And I think that I know of one in particular that, and that's my concern is the electrical and the sewer part of it too, but the electrical, because they nearly burnt the house down because of the hookups that they tried to hook up to the house. And it didn't work and didn't go that well. However, I don't know if there's some sort of permitting process that we could do or how we, because right now what's happening already, I don't want to see people subsidizing their, their, you know, rent or their mortgage by having multiple trailers in there. And, you know, it does happen. So I don't know what the answer is. I want people to be able to look after their, their parents or their loved ones or whatever. But I have nothing if we can do it through a permit or if there's any recommendations, councillor De Bruin.
The B C building code prohibits people living in an RV. So you're going to get a situation where if you allow it under the zoning bylaw, the building spectrum becomes a, you're living in a non allowable dwelling. So how are you going to deal with that? You can't change the building code. So I think we're going to have a big conflict there. And that's why NACUS reversed its track.
Councillor De Bruin, through the mayor, I'm, I'm in agreement with you leaving it in. Like I say, how do you prove that that's a relative or just, you know, somebody renting the trailer or the RV or camper, whatever it is. And there are spots available to customers. They need them. And if there's not, then there's another business opportunity to go along with the storage place. But I just, yeah, I, I don't want to, I know there's people doing it right now, but that doesn't make it right. Absolutely. And I don't want to see every other house doing it.
Actually, through the mayor. Two things, at the end of section, I maybe take a quick break. I think that would be a good time to do that. And then secondly, I appreciate the conversation and the social construct of what we're trying to do to be able to enable people be able to handle it and be here and help. But when we meet all of these other types of positions, we do it at the risk of losing hotels. And another combination and it's difficult because like we're saying, we're trying to do it to help out a couple of people. But what ends up happening is we vote to the worst denominator and then it gets done across the board. And then we lose a hotel or we don't get that development or we don't get that multi place, we don't get that affordable housing complex. Like what becomes more difficult is to sell to developers. I mean, with the developers, again, the ones that came back out last week or two weeks ago. I mean, with them tomorrow to come to go through, again, James and I are looking at every single available parcel of land for potential development in town. We need to crunch those numbers. We need to run through what the impacts going to be for our sewer, what the impacts going to be for our community. And if we allow things like this, there's no real great differential factor between allowing them to have an RV in somebody's yard and attending somebody's backyard. You kind of start to go down that slope with it. I appreciate it. It's fantastic. It's a great idea. And I think it works in some things. You're building a house, get an RV in, live in it for a couple of months whilst you're building it. That encourages a young family coming up from the coast that are really on a shoestring budget. Buy an RV, they build a house and then they get to have an RV and their room house. Fantastic. But allowing them to get an RV for the cows to stay on for a long time. We can't quite crunch those numbers. It becomes very difficult as well. So I understand it and appreciate the conversation.
I think it should go from more than 30 days to a higher day. Okay, two month, a 60 day or something like that.
So that's where I was kind of going with the permitting. So then it's, if you, if you do it with a permit, then you know when it's.
It's due.
Yeah. You know, okay, well, that's going to be moved here.
And that's once a year.
Yeah. So.
And then I can definitely get hold in a gus to find out where they go and get some more details on that one.
I wouldn't want it extended even if it was family. I'm like, after three days. Usually, sir, it smells gone.
A beautiful segue to refuse and recycling bins. Thank you. I'm merely sharing that, that on certain land uses like commercial, industrial, institutional, there's expectation of screening around their refuse and recycling bins. Protecting against wildlife and that they have to be on the property that they serve. So questions on?
Councillor De Bruin. I've got a problem with that. I've got a problem with that. The screening, like, we're not a H L A and we're not urban. We're rural, and to have a fancy little screen to hide your garbage, and yes, I know our garbages should all be put somewhere because of the wildlife and everything else, but some people do have, I have a garbage can up front of my place. We don't put garbage in there that's like cardboard or whatever, and then it's, there's no foodstuffs, but yeah, we're not a homeowners association. And we're not urban.
That's what I agree.
From what I understand, it's only for commercial, industrial, institutional, and multifamily. Right? So it's not for residential properties?
That's just my side, we can say, right?
Yeah. No, because, sorry, just, uh, I mean, you go to, I, I don't know street names and that sort of stuff, but the multifamily units behind.
Manny's.
Manny's, like that area, uh, they have screens set up, they have garbage bins and that sort of stuff, and there's a little, little fence that just protects it. And, and they're, they're big garbage bins, maybe this, you have a lot of them. And I would refer to that rather than them dumping their trash into our beer proof bins that are up there as well.
Okay, um, so through the mayor, this portion is actually consistent with our garbage collection and regulation bylaw. That also says commercial, uh, should be screened. So it's already in, I mean, other bylaws.
That's where we, oh, yes, through the mayor, that also prevents other people from dumping into that. You know, there's one up on the eleventh aisle, I think, there's a site there and they have one as well, but anybody go up the block and throw the garbage in there if they.
Very good. Checking five two fours on retaining walls, this is an area that is contentious in most municipalities that have hillsides. And so it's important to spell out exactly what we mean and exactly what we expect. I would suggest the two numbers that tend to jump out would be five point two, nine four point four, which is no retaining wall should exceed two meters in height except. And, um, five point twenty four point six, which speaks to no retaining wall should exceed one point two meters in height except in accordance with when there are secondary buildings, residential zones. Any reaction, I, I suggest retaining walls happen before, before any conversation on.
What has, and it's come, and we've done, um, we've done, it's come to the council before for a retained wall higher than that. So my question is, if we, because we live in the mountains, on the mountains, within the mountains, is that not something that we can, we can, you know, increase? I mean, if a fence could be six feet, why can't we make a retaining wall sixteen?
It's supposed to be engineered.
It's going to be engineered, sure. Right?
Yes, through your worship, the engineers and geoscientists to B C issued very clear direction on that a couple of years ago. And you're right, anything over four feet, one point two meters does need to be engineered. Uh, and once it's engineered, then yes, municipality and council have, have discretion to allow these, as you wish. It is very, very common, the municipality restricts it to numbers like this, and then entertains variances. I appreciate that's not ideal. The other approach is that for subdivision development, typically, the, um, the city engineer has the ability to, to vary this. Uh, if you're doing multiple lots, if you're doing a grading plan for a larger development, uh, they don't need to go to council to vary this. This typically is for individual lot, individual lot redevelopment. So, uh, you can make these any, any you want. However, it is very typical, anything over one point two is regulated somehow.
It's, it's regulated by law?
Well, it does say in five point two four four one that it can go for a maximum of six meters, right? Which is what, twenty feet?
Yeah.
Oh, where's that?
Five point two.
Five point two four, point four, point one, the indent in paragraph. Okay. Oh, it's on that one, six.
That's got to be twenty feet now. I'm not the meter person, I'm still feet and inches.
Through your worship, yes, it is twenty feet, and, and I think the key words on this paragraph, the way I would interpret them, would be required to provide for the safety of a building or structure containing a primary occupancy. So, uh, yes, if you're, if you're protecting or, or shoring up a situation, I'd argue that's where this applies. I, I'm not sure that the intent of this is you can build a twenty foot wall and put a house on top of it. It's not how I would apply it, but.
Never know.
Correct.
Council of the Row.
The, the, the four foot thing here, I think should be changed because those lock blocks are already two and a half feet, so if you go too high, you need it engineered. I think they should go up a little bit, it's too high lock boxes. Pretty safe program.
That's a really safe story, so to say that again, so a lock block is how high, two and a half feet?
I think there's thirty inches.
Thirty inches?
Yeah. And if you jump two of them on top of another, you go over that four foot mark. And, and two of them are very safe already, so if you have to go to an engineer, that costs you another ten thousand dollars, say, so you can put two lock boxes. And I don't think it's necessary for two lock boxes to be engineered, unless they're going a little. A guy could restrict it on the size of the lock blocks? Or something like that.
Through your worship, if, uh, if I can get ten thousand dollars to sign your wall, I'll, I'll come and sign your wall. The other piece though is that often part of the block is buried, right? So it, part of it has to be underground. So the four foot is, is common because you typically can get two lock blocks, um, at that, at that level. But I hear you, and if you see fit to change it, change it.
No, it's great.
Okay. Council of the Row.
Does the zoning bylaw require that it's just engineered or is that building code?
It's the engineer, your worship, it's the Engineers Association who's prescribed that it must be engineered.
So with that, we are not able to waive it, we, we cannot say that it doesn't need to be engineered?
No, you may not, I, I suggest that the, the intent here is whether, um, will, will allow retaining walls over one point two meters in height. So I would, I would suggest with five twenty four point six is, is where you would look to increase that, if you were looking to increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the mayor, for a retaining wall, you don't know what weight is on the other side that's holding up that wall. So once it's over one point four meters, if, if it's just the wall itself, it's not going to fall over, but if you've got a house or a highway that's pushing on that wall, that's why you need it engineered over a certain height. And we can't just say, oh, we think that a lock block will hold, we don't know what's pushing down on it, we don't know what drainage is on it, that's why they need to engineer it.
Yeah, but you think you need to engineer two lock blocks? That's my problem.
Depends if you put a skyscraper right beside the building, is that two lock blocks going to hold a skyscraper?
Are you talking skyscrapers in a little bit?
It's a large, heavy structure.
I, I think that's a little bit, uh, out of, out of, out of text personally, but, um, I think two lock blocks would be would be, would be sufficient without an engineer. That's myself personally.
I tend to agree, but I don't know in this scenario that it wouldn't work, that we would become liable and, you know. I mean, like I said, if we're on a hillside and they just want to put a retaining wall that is two lock blocks high to protect rolling rocks coming down, and I mean that it might be two lock blocks high at the beginning, but as the rocks roll down there, right, it, it will, it won't be that on the other side, so I, I agree that it should be two lock blocks, but. CEO.
I would say this is going to be another account. I'm not, some information on this one, I think you should, have a look at the asset and maybe.
You're the mayor.
Okay, I'm confused here on where we're getting the, the two lock blocks and whatever, because two meters is about six feet. And if these things are thirty inches, that's five feet for two of those, so.
When they say four point, four point something.
It says that the height may exceed two meters to a maximum of six meters, so almost the grades and site corridors of adjacent properties remain unaffected, and that's where the engineering part comes in.
Through your worship, the way I interpret this is, any, within the building, near your building, holding up your building, you're entitled to up to two meters.
Right.
And under five point twenty four point four, but if I go down to five point twenty four point six, we're now talking about retaining walls that are outside of the building areas. So I would argue these are your landscape walls that can only be one point two. So your, 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 your house can have a, can have a retaining wall of two meters, but your landscaping can only have a retaining wall of one point two or four feet. This is the way I interpret these two.
Right, because it's not doing anything, right? You're going to make a rock garden or something for this thing.
Precisely.
Or maybe it's, it's your, the property backs onto a side and the face of your property, like I said, you don't want those rolling rocks coming down, so you put up a retaining wall. I mean, they are around here.
Oh, no, I know they are, but I'm just saying, they're not, they're not there to.
Hold your hose up.
No. Yeah, they're just there to prevent stuff from falling into your yard.
Yeah, and so why would you only use one lock block instead of two? That's what I'm saying, you can put two meters on your house, but you can only use one lock block for a retaining wall at the back? That doesn't make sense. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
So, uh, CEO is going to pull that one and, uh.
To the mayor, it may, it may also just be, I mean, is there the addition for hand drills and top of walls and other consideration? So I think we'll fill it in the account.
Very good. Five point twenty five is around setbacks, as the district can clarify, and that it applies to bareland strata lots as well. Unless there's anything on setbacks, but otherwise, five twenty six is shipping containers. And we had an extensive conversations with staff and with your building official and a few others. And the crux here was that if there's a shipping container conversion that's going on and that shipping container gets a building permit, that's a totally different use and, and structure to use a shipping container for all of its other various storage and, and uses, so.
Well, I have a couple of questions on this one, shipping containers, is there a limit on how many? Or did I miss that there was a limit here, or can somebody have four shipping containers? Or is that in our own bylaws?
So if you could, we, we, bylaws just sits right now prohibits them anywhere except industrial, correct?
Yeah, uh, anywhere except for industrial and commercial and things.
No, because I think they're allowed on the hot farm, and I think there, uh, there was properties down in V L A. Uh, I don't know if they went to certain size, but I'm sure that that has come up and it's allowed.
Currently, they're allowed on rural residential, uh, properties, so the hot farm, um, East Littlelet.
Yeah, there are certain properties that they're allowed on. I'm wondering if there is a limit to how many is allowed on those, and I can't remember. So I had, I had, that was one of my questions, and I jumped like five point two eight point two.
Five point.
Five point two eight point two, oh, that went under, uh, yeah, but it goes with the shipping, shipping container. I just want. It's a different, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump, I'll go back to shipping containers, I just, it's part of my notes for shipping containers, Joe.
We also not permit, we also allow shipping containers for construction work, I think we also allow shipping containers for moving, moving home. But a short period.
A short period of time, through your worship, yes, for a short period of time, they, they're allowed to be used for the movement of materials and for a short period of time, new storage materials.
There's some industry that uses big box shipping containers to bring them in, bring them out. And then the other one is that we just kind of came across, I'd like a wee bit more definition on this one, definitely for, for this. Uh, we recently had patients who seen, can we use a shipping container to put our furniture from our house and house, we're doing a building. I think, certain season I were talking about this recently, uh, James. My understanding was, yeah, you can for thirty days, that makes sense, and then when you go into the definition of it, the definition is for the duration of the building term, which is up to two years.
So I do feel that.
I'm going to get a build, build my home for two years, initially, I can take them in your yard for two years.
Well, I know that that's already, we put in a bylaw that said, and it was up in the Goldbridge area, so while people were cleaning up the messes after the fires in their, um, areas, that they could have shipping containers to contain all their, their, uh, like saws and brakes and shovels and everything, because everybody was looting that pond or relieving that, right? So they had shipping containers come in and we, we allowed, uh, while they are cleaning up for the life of their, their property. And I think it's up to one year or something like that, but we did put an end date on it. Council of the Row.
Way things are going and all with theft and everything like that, a shipping container is a pretty good security for somebody. It's better than a garage because it's steel, it'll be locked up tight. And it, it's just something considered for around here, like to keep the shipping containers in rural areas. They can, where, I mean, if you've got a little, little lot, you keep a, you know, they're stealing your lawnmowers and everything else. I, I think we have to be very wary of what we're going to take away. And that's, that's my thought, because it is, it's, they're secure. It takes a little while to get into it, I mean, the, the district up there, they've, they've got a couple of them, and I put them locks and locks on there, so you can't get out the locks, and, I mean, then it's, 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 I think it's necessary. I mean, we're not downtown Vancouver, you.
How do you know I'll get to you, uh, Joe, please, Mark.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate it, and to be honest, if I could, yeah, through the, if I have, if I can have a shipping container in my personal lot, uh, I would absolutely do it. There are other things that come in, uh, as serious concerns, there was a fatality in Entevi, uh, with a firefighter. That there was a, that there was a vacuum explosion that blew the doors off of a C can, a shipping container, and killed a firefighter in Entevi. So I know the fire department are dead against them. Absolutely against them, because unless they're vented properly, and they get proper ventilation on them to be used, to be stored, everyone puts the exact same things in them, with the ride-ons, the tractors, the sleds, you know, but everything is gasoline and everything is ready, it's solid. That's exactly what I would do with them, but if they're not vented properly, it, it's, it's still, it's still an ongoing case because that was in two thousand and sixteen, and, uh, we know, I was working in secondment at the time and that, so I know that, I know the individuals involved in that as well. And every time I go up to ship in container when I was in fire, I mean, they're really nervous. So there's definitely things in there just to keep in consideration, but they're not against it, but there are other.
But there should be some bylaw.
That's just my question about the venting, so.
Council of the Row.
It does have in here about the venting, five point two six point five. Point two six point five, especially that. I also think that they should look nice. I really do, and I think there should be something in here that, that says that they need to be aesthetically nice, because I know all of my, Eric. Not mine. But it's, I would like to see something that makes them at least earth toned or painted and, you know, raining on them or anything like that, or feeding out. And if they're going to be in yards, they should conform to keep our community at least looking somewhat aesthetically nice.
Council of the Row.
Okay. Council of the Row, sorry, I was just reading, and, um, five point two six point seven. It says they must be located in accordance with B C building code and B C fire code. So you can't just plant them anywhere you want in your yard.
Who monitors that? When they're being planted anywhere in the yard, which they don't.
Which if they are building by law inside.
So maybe they need a permit to put them in. That would give our venting, our bylaw, I can just get, tell them they need to be vented, like move here or there.
I think that's a good idea, but what about the ones that are already?
Don't they get them vented or they gotta move them? Simple.
And what is properly vented?
That's not like immediately.
That's a year, so.
Yeah, through the, it needs to be, sometimes they need to like extract the plans on it. And then again, both the common denominator, people start using it for illegal activities. They'll use it for production of drugs. They'll use it for cannabis, they'll use it for hydroponics, they'll use it for a house or a hotel, but you always go to the bottom denominator. Don't worry what you're gonna use it for, go to the bottom denominator all the time. There are things with shipping containers, if you paint a full shipping container, I know that buddy painted a whole shipping container and tried to sell it. And once you start painting over the numbers and the decals on it, yeah, can't use it again. So not allowed to. It's the same as cargo containers on train tracks. If you ever see a cargo container scurrying, you see a cargo trailer or anything that's on a train track, the underside of the train tracks, you'll see there's graffiti all over it, part from over the numbers. The graffiti artists will not spray paint the numbers, because the minute that they spray paint the numbers, the full thing needs to be taken off the tracks and repainted. So if you ever see a graffiti on the side of the track, you'll see that the graffiti artist himself don't even spray the numbers over. So those weird things out there. Just saying.
And maybe I'm not understanding the issue, but it says here that if you wanna put a shipping container on accessory building, so storage, and for the, you need a building permit. And, uh, so that means that, you know, a building official is gonna come, give you permits, and he's gonna do inspection without the ventings for it. I don't understand the issue of that.
Is there another, uh? Is there another one in there, Ralph, that says something that is, uh, not, um, on the foundation or is movable, that you don't need that building permit?
Very good. Anything else on shipping containers?
You said.
Yeah. Our five twenty-seven site triangles, this is a critical component of, of ensuring the ability to look around corners. And so not sure if anybody has any questions or comments, but prohibiting planting as well as fencing in that site triangle at a, at a corner lot. Five twenty-eight is around swimming pools.
I would like to take five point two, eight point two. I, I cannot believe that anybody would use a shipping container for a swimming pool either, even if they dug it into the ground. I mean, that would just be a rust bucket, I was thinking.
Nope. Yeah. There's a huge business for this, massive business, but I don't know if anyone wants to be done in the end, so then.
The business.
There's a huge opportunity, that's, hundred percent this. So.
Were you there some really pretty? Okay, well, I'm gonna go home and Google that, because I saw that, I liked it, I like, how ridiculous. Counselor.
I mean, I wouldn't mind adding that the shipping container must be, you know, cannot be above ground or something, uh, because then it can be really. It's a very, let's say, feature from right there. So it's a big block. If you then create a deck on top and that sort of stuff to be able to get into, you know, so maybe there is, uh, you know, where it must be at least, you know, we cannot put two, more than four feet out of the ground or something. And you can have a, a deck that is four feet off the ground as you jump in and that sort of stuff, but it, uh, uh, yeah, it's, 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 I think actually, they can only be in ground.
Yeah.
For it to be certified, it's a water.
So it has to be in ground?
I, I mean, we could specify. I mean, we can, we can indicate that we don't, that it needs to be designated.
But it needs to, we need to be able to see the number on it too, correct?
No, no, there's.
I don't think making them in is a good idea, because they do rust up. And within ten years, there'll be holes in the wall.
Thank you. Oh, no. I need more.
Okay.
Um, to the mayor, while I'm thinking, you know, it's fine and dandy that you have this thing four feet above the ground, so many feet out here, then you need a building permit for a deck, anything over two feet. So. I believe that's what it is, two feet. If you're going four feet, you gotta get a building permit to build your deck. Uh, it's a can of worms.
Thank you, to the mayor. Uh, they're really successfully done. Uh, and there's a good market for them. There's a life expectancy for them. I think it's ten to fifteen years, really short life expectancy. They do come powder coated, they come sealed, they actually come with part of a good amount of it and build stairs. Typically what they do is they cut the stairs, they cut the, they cut the, they cut shipping container in half typically, and then they use half of it. That's what.
Oh, my gosh.
We would need to follow up pretty, is to build an infinity type idea, uh, build.
Wow.
But the ideas for them are, are really good. There's a lot of really good idea for them. There's a huge market. So in order to do one, you would need to do a building permit, you would need appropriate water, appropriate power, appropriate siding, appropriate foundations. It would be the same as building a pool. It's basically just a liner to put a pool in. So if somebody was gonna build a pool, it would be no different other than allowing shipping containers. The definition of shipping container would need to be certified on the building code and would need to be appropriate. It wouldn't be a nurse shipping container dumped in a yard with a hose in it.
Yeah, but that's where I was sitting, like looking.
No, it's really, just with somebody taking a still stone to the side of it and chopping it up. But no, that's. No, 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 that's not it.
Maybe that's what the guy.
Maybe we'll, you know, maybe we'll do the damage to that one.
Okay.
And five twenty-nine truck parking and storage gross vehicle weight over six thousand kilograms.
Counselor. Yeah. Um, yeah, I know what goes on about unless home industry. We do have industry here. We do have people who are working for somebody else who are logging truck, dump truck, or whatever else. They should be able to park there. That is basically their work vehicle. They should be able to be able to park it on their property. I know some start very, very early in the morning, but I think the noise thing is like fifteen minutes that a vehicle can be running before it's a problem anyway. But yeah, I don't like that, that it has to be, um, inside of the building or. Yeah.
That should be. That should be scrapped. My personal opinion.
Counselor.
Just trying to envision Eagles and Crescent with a logging truck parked on the side of the road, getting fired after six o'clock in the morning for fifteen minutes to heat the engine. I mean, it, uh, uh, I would like, it'd be a huge step backwards for some of the communities that we have in town. And again, you know, when we're talking about rural residential, you know, whatever, the, the spacing between homes is such that the, the impact of such is gonna be a lot less. Where the homes are more dense and we're looking at multifamily units and densities and that sort of stuff, then, like I said, this is, you know, you're gonna have a lot of people that, that are gonna be looking at that and deciding not to move here because of the nuisance. And, uh, again, rural residential, but you don't have the density, um, but.
I do know that in, um, because I used to live on the front of a street, we were allowed logging trucks. Because. And, and we do have contractors who do come in. I know the hotels kind of iffy as to what zone they actually are in, but we do have logging trucks or whatever, they're coming to work, that they are parked next to that. You do have residential next door as well there.
Particularly, um, at the four points, because it's residential all along there, that the trucks are all.
But you also see a lot of logging contractors park their vehicles at the middle at night. Right, there's, if you go there in, in the evening, you see them line up and, uh, they're all, you know, they're all up, you know, at the hotel and that sort of stuff, staying in town, but they will do their due diligence to park their trucks in a, in a, in an industrial area and where there's a lot of noise and where, you know, it's away from residences. So we're, we're gonna start parking big trucks, industrial trucks in residential zones. And like I said, it's gonna change the character of this, of this, uh, of this community.
It is something that's been in this community for thirty years though, so it's not that it is something that is totally new and unheard of. The industry has backed off from what it was thirty years ago, but if you were here then, it was like fifty, sixty trucks coming through a town.
And they were parked in residential zones?
They were parked in residential zones. Um, you also do have some local people who are driving for somebody who is not local. They have their truck which is working here. They don't have the option to be able to park it somewhere else that has to be parked where their residence is. There are, there are drivers who are driving for somebody from out of town, because this is where the work is at the moment. And they do not have the option of parking it elsewhere. Uh, I would go to counsel.
I back Patty up one hundred percent. There used to be thirty-five, forty logging trucks in this town, and they were parked all over town, and gravel trucks and everything else. As far as changing the town, we're not changing nothing. And that's, I, I, I'm on Patty's side. I don't, I don't think that should be considered here.
Joe.
Thank you, to the mayor. Uh, understanding those comments and appreciating just another thing we can consider and also think about is the general way, and I know that's maybe happened in the past, but just generally the tier on our roads and our infrastructure as well. Just keep that in mind, that we're looking at these things and we're allowing things. Then we are allowing people, it's not just the noise, it's actually the trucks themselves on our, on our paths, on our roads, should say. Uh, that's a lot of we to be on roads just for different times of years, just, and I know that it's happened in the past, appreciate that. But, uh, just a consideration, just a lot of things to think about. I know that I can't see Cam right now, but I can, I can feel his gaze at me as he and him are trying to get asphalt for what I'm hearing just now. It does affect things like that as well. Just a consideration, all these things get affected, we allow things, they won't go and affect.
And, and fair enough. I, but my house itself was built with a long driveway, because the guy that built it had a logging truck, and that's how the whole, why we have such a huge driveway. I get it with the, with the asphalt, but I, in this day and age, when our town doesn't have many logging trucks or, or industry trucks going through it, I, I don't know, I kind of welcome that. Counselor.
Oh, to the mayor, so I just got a question. So did the fellow that built the house are on the road or in the driveway?
In the driveway. He parked it in the driveway.
Yeah, so that's a little different. I know when my husband was working for Associated and had his truck, he left the trailer at J and H Truck Shop and just bought it home and backed into our driveway. He parked the truck and the trailer on, you know, the street. So I think that's where the difference is, is. And there are places that need to park. I mean, but a lot of people don't want to park them like downtown. I know we have a, a kid that works in Enteville, worked out of town, he would stay with us and he would park that car truck right in front of our house and then go to work at two o'clock in the morning and, but he wouldn't park it downtown, it would be not there by the time he walked around.
Well, I just think, I don't, I don't know. Like I say, when he parked in Calgary, he could not park at our house. And I would drive him over to where he parked his truck. It was just, it's the way of life, it's the way you have to be. I don't know. I, I remember first term when I ran for council and somebody was at my door on a Sunday morning because so-and-so's logging truck is fired up at two AM and he doesn't leave until quarter to three, blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, yeah, so I don't know how you, really don't. Counselor.
I was just gonna go on similar ground, similar, is what a counselor would be saying there, that a lot of these trucks are par- parked on the property of people. There's not that many that are actually on the side of the road impacting infrastructure.
There are some.
There are some, yes. Yeah. But, and I know, we're not thirty years ago, we're not twenty years ago. I know the whole sort of dynamics of the town is changing, but we still have to think of the people who are still in industry and working these other jobs. It's not all just tourism and artisan arts and crafts and everything else. We still do have industry in this town and we do have to try and support that somehow and telling them that they have to find somewhere else away from their homes when that is the only option. I think we have to do something there.
Counselor.
It's true. I don't know what my concern is, and I'll repeat my concern, the density in our, in our community is very different. And I think that's not being recognized with these nuisance issues. The hot farm with large lots, where you can actually back in and, you know, have your truck on site, which this five point one, two, nine actually speaks to street parking, is on the hot farm, may be desirable. And, uh, and I'm, you know, if, if that, uh, if, if I do believe that happens a lot and, uh, driving through the, through, through the area, see a lot of logging trucks. So maybe that's where we, where we say that's an allowable, you know, whatever, uh, that is, means. But if you look in, in the downtown core, if you look at the smaller lots, you know, where you can hard apart all of these vehicles, but if you're able to, you're gonna create a lot more nuisance for your neighbors. And, and the real question is whether or not we wanna, you know, as council say, no, that's, you know, if you fire up your, your, your truck at two AM, um, and the rest of the neighborhood wakes up, it's fine. And that's, that's, I think, so for my, my concern is just where we allow this and what kind of densities, uh, and that's with, with some, you know, shipping containers as well, right? Shipping containers, it's easy on the hot farm where you have larger lots, small, small lots, like you have a Victoria and Columbia and Panorama and that sort of stuff, you can use a bit more restraint. So that's the only consideration.
I know Cirque Seize is trying to.
Sorry. Yeah, so, um, I will say like, there is the second five point two, nine point two, where, um, vehicles exceeding six thousand kilograms are allowed in places where home industry is permitted use and, so, and we have gone it that far yet, but in suburban residential lots, where we anticipate what's the hot farm is, suburban residential, that home industry has a permitted use. And so the large lots like the hot farm would still. Be a lot of time like these six thousand.
But what if the, the, the operator of the logging truck was not the owner of the logging truck, then it's on the hot farm? So a lot of these people work for another company, they bring their truck home at night and they park it in front, but if they're not the owner, they don't have the business, they don't hold the license for the business. And the other thing is, is this bylaw is not speaking to, if it's running for half an hour outside, there's a noise bylaw for that. This is not speaking to that. This is where parking and storage is happening, not noise and, and so vehicles exceeding gross weight are not permitted to be parked or stored either inside or outside of building or structure on any lot zone for residential use. And I, I disagree with that, but.
Okay, familiar worship, um, two options to my head.
Okay, familiar work, um, two options to my head. Either you can, can carry it forward to consultation and hear from the public or if council is of a common mind, make the decision and direct us how you'd like this to look. I think that, I think that I'm hearing a whole lot of consensus. How would you like us to treat this?
I'll go to Counselor Wade first. It's you, the mayor. I think we really need to be careful with this because of the B C Hydro commitment to the 10-year projects and they're already bringing in equipment and things. And they park in that spot across from Mohawk Road, right? So usually they park there overnight and then they leave in the morning or they go, whatever. And I'm thinking, if you have people going in and out with the equipment all the time and let's say they're renting so-and-so's basement suite down in the VLA, we could really have a can of worms happening here. I mean, we don't know how much equipment's coming in, we don't know how many people, we don't know where anybody's staying. You know, I, I would be really, I would leave it in there. I don't know, maybe we can sweeten it somehow, but I'm not comfortable taking it out by any means. And, and as far as somebody owning this truck, if they're smart, they'll still be getting paid under business name just for the ride offs, whether they own that truck or not. But just saying, that's not part of it. Well, it is. If they own the house and that's where they're parking it, they have an in-home business named Joe Close, whatever. I'm sorry, because then you get the ride offs, so it just makes sense.
But they don't own the vehicle, they can't have a business, it's not their business.
They can't have a business. He could be a hotshot carrier, he could be many things, but he's not. He's.
It's not his truck.
It's not his truck, but I just think that's skirting on. No, you can do it. I'm sorry, but you can do it. It's been done. Not saying, yeah, okay.
6,000 KGs, I couldn't park my pickup in my house. 6,200 KGs. Your 450 truck, well, why am I could not park that at your house? It's just under. That's because you licensed it that way. But if you look in the door, it's over.
Do, do.
My pickup, then I drive. 6,200.
So this needs to, it needs to be, I think, it needs to.
This needs to be looked at seriously.
Looked at seriously. It needs to go to the public. It needs to.
You couldn't have said that in an hour ago?
Yeah. And let's take 10 minutes if there's no more questions on this. Okay.
I think we should refer to them.
Are we still going another 100 pages?
Yes, we do.
Well, the, the last.
Yeah, the actions.
The last one's really hard. Once you get to that.
So we don't, but let's not to virtual doubt. Sounds like.
Why not?
It'll be helpful. If we've heard, maybe we flag some of this in the public consultation.
I have to throw you a gift for Joey.
Oh, we haven't gotten the juicy stuff yet, like the actual zone.
So my recommendations.
So, yes, as we, as we consider how we want to structure the next portion of this meeting, my suggestion would be if we present land uses and the various zones, perhaps come back for discussion, is that possible? Or how would you like to see this proceed?
I'm going to go on, but I.
Yeah, it's good, good amount. The idea of this is not, this is not our final reading. This is not the final time we go through it. It's just, we're trying to get this out so that we can see what we're kind of looking at. We're going to throw this back out to the public. They're going to come back to us anyway. We're identifying the things, we could have probably end these ourselves on it. These are no other ones that are going to be contentious. A couple of extra ones, but I think we should try and, you know, kind of get the base going with it a little bit more than well, if we're not happy with something. Give it back, we'll have a look at.
Okay, so for sure, we will make it so we're not repeating each other's questions. I know we're going to disagree, and that's good. And we'll go.
Lovely. All right, so for, we are now on page forty-two of one forty-four into the specific use regulations in section six. And really, the definitions around accessory detached dwellings is rather important because the ability to introduce carriage houses or cottage homes, or however we wanted to introduce dwellings as a second accessory use on some of the properties. And so the definition there is, is very specific, talks to maximum floor area, talks to where they may be permitted and not permitted as accessory detached dwellings. So, know if there's any comment on six-two. Six-three talks to urban agriculture and what is permitted in terms of greenhouses and, and growing on a, on a lot.
Just don't be keeping, I think that this is great. I do know that there is one thing going back to electric fencing that they do suggest that if you are keeping bees or whatever, you have to have electric fencing to deter. And that's saying the chickens, you're sure you're recommended to have electric fencing. So I think we need to, when we do the electric fencing thing, we need to refer back to this and mesh them somehow.
I noted.
Yeah, it was fast.
Discussion at six point five on bed and breakfasts and, and where it is permitted use exactly the parameters that that are allowable in terms of number of guests, buildings and such for bed and breakfasts. Six point six defines caretaker dwelling and what that should look like in terms of size. And six point seven, we were talking home industry previously, and so this is the home industry component describes the allow a lot size, what it looks like, how it, how it operates. Number of employees and such for home home industry. Six point eight, similarly, the times from occupations, and these are fairly standard definitions. Just to make it very clear in terms of how we apply the bylaw.
Information is also good, your needs.
We have a short-term rental section. Six point nine, we just spent some time on keeping of animals, appreciating the community uses and community desires here.
Can you just tell me what is the difference between what is considered a small livestock and what is considered livestock?
Thank you. I anticipated that there might be small livestock prefers to domesticated animals raised for agricultural purposes. Such as meat, milk, wool, eggs, chickens, rabbits, goats, sheep, small livestock.
That's why I didn't.
What did you say? What did you say?
Correct.
Chicken?
Yeah.
Rabbits, goats, sheep.
Goats. Sure.
Okay, so then livestock will be horses and cows and such.
Correct.
So, but a miniature cow.
Yeah, eat your candy.
So, keeping of animals. Know if there's any other discussion on that, but secondary suites. One thing I would like to draw your attention to is the province is starting to remove restrictions on the size of secondary suites. You maybe want to be aware of that. Our bylaw is still proposing the secondary suite is maximum half the size of the rest of the building. The province is okay with the secondary suite being as big as the main house. We're suggesting that's not where we'd like to see it go, but just wanted to raise that for, for your consideration, so.
So, sorry, you're suggesting that, that we don't change that?
I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting as presented is, is my recommendation, which is the secondary suite has a maximum size that is half the size of the rest of the building.
Is there a in-between that we could?
And
Senator McNary?
And the government saying that it could be the same size as, as the main building?
Or larger.
Or larger?
Yes.
Would it be a secondary suite if it was larger?
This is, this is the irony of the terminology, but essentially they're suggesting everything can become a duplex.
Okay.
In a housing need, I don't have an issue with that. I don't, is this something that, in your opinion, C A O, that we should be deferring to the province? And would the province not override us? Could they not override us? Because I know they, they override us on a few issues. Could they not override us on this?
Yeah, I'm sure not one of the details we've been said. We need to relate, always relating to. I've related to get that some senior thought.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a difference between, is there a difference between the duplex and the secondary suite? I mean, like, in terms of what a duplex can do and a secondary suite cannot, or is it, does it become the same? Or, I mean, I don't understand.
So you were, so my understanding is that a duplex, for example, can be stratified. I'm not aware the province is allowing for suites to be stratified. There are building code implications of suites versus entirely separate units. So there are, there are a few, but I think it really comes historically, secondary suite, there's a basement. And they're trying to open it up, that it can be a unit anywhere. But it's, it's still titled secondary suite, which is where it's confusing, because you have default to basement and they're saying, no, it can be.
Yeah, it's really good. There's a lot of, like, my head's, I'm still trying to get around this one, but there's a lot of implications in this. So if you're put in a secondary suite, there's additional water, there's additional potential sewer, there's other basic alleging, so some days for higher regulations, higher separations, additional doors, staircases, parking instructions. There's a, there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of information on water meters, electric meters. All of these things need to be considered. That's not, that's not, that's not even one you can consider. And that's potentially upgrading to the street. So if somebody's putting in two additional walk-through toilets downstairs, then the potential floors for that may need to be up in the street level right the way out to the, to the curb stop with a new, with a new curb stop on, there's a, there's a lot.
So P C code, if the, if the province doesn't override this in this, then.
Yep.
Any other question? Counselor, we.
Well, I'm just curious, like, if you are developing your basement, so you have a bungalow and it's fourteen hundred square feet, you're developing the basement, it would be more than fifty percent, like, if you're making a one or two bed, little suite down there. I don't, I think fifty percent is enough personally.
No, I, I'd be in favor of to make it as flexible as possible. I mean, we need the housing. If it's more than fifty percent, or if it's more, more than a hundred percent, I mean, you know, if someone wants to downsize and live in a smaller primary suite and then have a larger secondary suite, you know, as long as it conforms to all that building code, building by law and, and other stuff. I'd be, I'd be in favor of making this as possible as possible with as little limitations.
Can I ask, is there a difference from having a suite that is the same size of whatever duplex or however you want to call it, as opposed to a carriage house on the same property that's got that same infrastructure, water, parking, hydro, everything?
Like, yeah, it's really, they're not necessarily for the usage and things of that, usage, usage, but there are different definitions for carriages versus, versus suites. It's about a special separation and what they actually have to do with a, I think, and back to a water sewer with this thing, if it was something like that, but definitely, it's definitely an adjustment. Definitely manages.
Okay.
Respectfully, I, I thought I heard some clear direction. So my question is, do we go out to consultation at fifty percent? Or would council like to see that stricken and, and how, how would, how would you advise we proceed?
I would like to, to see our C A O take it and find out what the parental rules are going to be first, and then bring it back to us.
Yep. Thank you. Six eleven is the discussion around vacation rentals and number of people, number of parking stalls and such. All right. Onto section seven around landscaping regulations. Discussions around what is needed, where it's needed, what percentage is needed, plantings and such. I don't know. Frankly, I don't, I don't feel there's a whole of this contentious in this section, other than there's a very clear trying to codify things like pot size of plants, the spacing of plants, and, and what type of planting is required. But open to any conversation or discussion.
I was following.
That or hand up. You're getting help there, bud.
I just wanted to understand with the, is this for, like, like residential? So if I decided to put in a new garden in my house, I would only be able to plant native zeric and water conserv- conserving. Yeah, woody plants.
The bylaw does govern land use on all lots in Littlewets and.
So I couldn't make a new flower bed with all my bright colored petunias I'd have to do.
Staff, I'd have to, yes, that would be the implication of the bylaws, I'm certain.
Kind of like that. I don't like that. Counselor McNary.
Um, they, they talk about on this seven three point one one for for reducing stormwater discharge and stuff like that. Then below, we got asphalt, concrete and pavers and whatnot. That's definitely going to affect our stormwater and stuff. I think we better leave that permissible instead of asphalt, concrete and whatnot, leave that an option also.
So add it?
Yeah, it's for the purpose of this bylaws, if all surfaces are not permanent, and that means like a gravel or something like that. And, and then, and, and below, it kind of contradicts itself. It says to reduce the stormwater discharges by more than twenty-five percent rate and, and quality by putting asphalt and concrete and, or whatever the add is, and then pavers. We're defeating that purpose. We're making a runoff right there with, with that hard surface instead of dissipating into the ground. We're making a, a hard runoff already.
Your work, if I may clarify, I believe what, what the intent of this comes up later in each of the zones, because we define how much permeable and impermeable space is allowed. And what we're trying to do here is merely identify the things that are, are clearly not permeable. Clearly, water cannot pass through them. Hence, yes, they produce runoff. So the things that produce runoff will be not just the building and the structure, but that we will also count the asphalt, concrete and pavers as not permeable surfaces. So I think this is going in the same direction you're meaning, which is this will count as stormwater generating. This will count towards the, the coverage total. So these are because some landscape architects will try and convince us that the pavers, oh, those are permeable pavers. We're saying, no, they're not. They're hard surface, they're, they shouldn't run off. So I think we're pointing to the same thing in that all we're doing is saying these are not permeable surfaces. These will count as hardscape. Does that, does that align with your concern?
Yes, yes, it does.
Thank you.
Counselor, the ground. Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay.
A seven point three point three one meter indicates existing landscape areas of healthy wheat plant shall be preserved during construction, blah, blah. I would like to see at least some leeway there in terms of fire smart recommendations that would maybe even recommend removing trees and shrubs. That's during construction, but it will preserve the value of the, of the new construction.
Counselor. One chance to plan, sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused on this. Is this all for residential? Or is it? I know we went through this where we I think it was A W and Tim Hortons and whatnot about trevories and landscape and whatnot, but I'm not comfortable with telling my neighbor that they can't plant flowers unless they're I don't know how anybody else feels. I mean, I have. Yeah.
Counselor.
Um, I was going to go sort of the same thing with three, seven, three, three, two, just back to that. If I know that we are trying to promote that we are having native plants and water-saving plants, but I would like that changed to something that if you're making a new one, it is recommended or suggested that you go this way, but you can still plant your other garden as well, the flowers.
Counselor, we, I'm kind of in agreement with that, because even with fire smart, they give you recommendations, but they don't tell you to have to do it. You know, I, I think this is getting a little above and beyond telling people what they can do on their own premises.
I'd say number one and two are most quickly, so. Counselor McNary.
I, I agree with you, true. I'd hate to tell somebody what they can plant in their yard and that they can't plant.
Three words, it might suggest that removing this requirement from residential might be achieve what you're trying to do when a commercial developer and stuff, real developer comes to town, even multi-family developer comes to town. I believe it is important there are landscaping standards for, for larger developments. So I'm curious if that might address the, the concerns.
I know when A W was being built, the, the cost of the landscaping was absolutely outrageous. And then when the burrows being built, they did, and it was, they had to conform to put in all these plants and everything in the middle of their acre of gravel, which, of course, it all died, and it cost them a bunch of money. It was an absolutely, in my opinion, a ridiculous request from a district and, and like I said, they spent five thousand dollars and within two months it was all bad. And I don't want to ask people, it's hard enough to build in this town without, without putting restrictions like this on top of it. I don't know. And I think it's fine, I'm sorry.
So, what are the ideas and a need? But if we don't encourage, let's see, we look at a hotel. We don't encourage hotels to do an attractive plant keeping. Then the country, it does move them, they won't do it.
It's fine to encourage it, or, or, you know, to, to have some guidelines.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we also going to be realistic, like I said, in making somebody spend five thousand dollars over and above building a business from the ground up for waste is, is, and we don't even have the water half the time to water all these things, so.
Counselor.
Well, let's do the mayor, can't, oh. This covers all the areas, right? So is it possible to take it out of the residential and leave it everywhere else? As a recommendation? Yeah, but I'm thinking, like, this is what we would recommend. Because even the developer coming in, they don't know about what our water restriction, well, they probably, if they did any research on it. Yes, they should, but I'm thinking, you know, the environment changes daily, the you know, the heat in the summer is unbelievable, and then depending on what you have for irrigation and I don't.
Through the miracle, you go, we will have a look at this.
So, trying to move past flowers and that sort of stuff, I though I'm with residential, that's for stuff, I'm all in agreement, but we had a, we had a discussion on a, on a development, which is do a water building, whatever. Little wet water building, the one next to the conference center. So we looked at the landscaping and a lot of it became concrete. Is there somewhere else, or is this the thing where it speaks to, you know, trying to mitigate that everything just becomes concrete and that there's green space and that there's, you know, where we try to reduce the heat that is being created within these development things?
Through the chair, fortunately, when you get into site specific, the specific zones, there's a maximum site coverage.
Okay.
They will, they will start to capture that.
Awesome, thank you.
And lastly, I just want to say, just because we enforce people to, to plant it, doesn't mean we, we enforce it to keep it. I think if you look around, like, especially Main Street and commercial properties, some of them are a disaster. You know, there's weeds this high, they never mowed them. It's, you know, it, just because we enforce it to put it in, doesn't mean it's disgraceful. It's absolutely, and I would rather go with a bylaw that said, you know, especially your commercial properties or your industrial properties have to be, you know, kept in a neat and tidy manner, but.
Through the chair, at the moment, I'm channeling a bylaw officer sharing with me that guidelines typically don't exist in, in a zoning bylaw. Guidelines should be separate. So if we're, if we're going to have something in here, it should be a do it or don't do it. If it's a guideline, it probably gets pulled out into a separate guidance document. Section eight. Parking and loading requirements, we tried, staff tried to be more permissive, tried to lower the parking requirements, tried to, to facilitate this being easier and less expensive, but I opened to discussion on parking.
Counselor.
H one three, please get rid of it. Yeah, I'm sorry, but no vehicle under a one acre lot can be parked unless it's enclosed within a building. As you're, you're getting them to the rates of some of these heavier pickups and you're wanting an enclosed garage.
Can't get anything in my garage.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's unreasonable.
Thank you. One of the other considerations that we're going to go specifically with weights, one of the things that we know, seeing in the U K and in Europe, is the electric cars, obviously, these weights now as well, the electric vehicles, not all, but a lot of these electric vehicles are a little bit heavy, so we should just really back to the, maybe the weights. Can we come back and look at that one?
Or should we just pull it? You guys.
Because it's saying here that it cannot be stored on a parcel unless it is entirely enclosed within a building.
I know, I don't, I don't. What do you think about this? Hold it, keep it?
We, we just had a very extensive discussion about this, so if you're going to ask me about my opinion again, you're going to get the same opinion, but please, like it says to me, this is logging trucks and that sort of stuff, right?
No, this could be.
I mean, if we want to change it from thirty-nine kilograms to six thousand kilograms, then we're back to logging trucks, right? I mean, if you want to push it up to six thousand kilograms, I don't care. I think, you know, the, we're back into the discussion, do we want to have logging trucks parked in high density zone? And this is four thousand square meters, which is. One acre.
Call to Hector. Have to write that down.
Yeah, so, have a look at it.
Counselor, we, Counselor McNary, you want to weigh in on this one? You're now, okay. All right.
Section eight point four, this is a attending, sorry, I didn't know if there might be. We tried to loosen up the parking requirements, we tried to, to be less restrictive, so we can certainly, um, go through loading spaces and parking stalls, but generally follows what we had before, just a little less restrictive. For council's consideration, the discussion of providing electric vehicle charging infrastructure in, in new developments, um, this is, the province is, is very strong on this and our current draft recommends that a level two charger, um, be provided, a level two charger is one step above just being able to plug it into a wall, which is level one charger. Level two charger, I think it's two hundred and forty volts, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a cost in terms of the building, but it is setting it up for electric vehicles in the future and it's, this is a very common, um, requirement added into a lot of other municipalities, so for your consideration and then, and discussion, eight point four is proposing that all parking stalls, um, have an energy drive.
All parking stalls?
I don't think so. I don't think the electric vehicles are going to go. I can do a name.
Yeah. Eight point.
Is our eight point four point one?
Eight fifty, oh, I suppose one is one, yeah. Right, okay.
Through the mayor, what, what did the changes to B C building codes was that all new houses and homes have to have electric? As part, as part of what they're, they brought that in Europe three, four years ago and they want to do now.
So now they're doing it as a B C code?
You're building a house, you're putting an electric charger unit in a bar, bar, bar conduits for that, conduits for that, to then you brought back in.
Do they stipulate, um, a level one or do they stipulate a level two or in the code?
Level one is just up there.
Right, I know, I, yeah. So in the code, do they stipulate?
So I think it's just condos in place, ready to be installed inside the houses and homes.
But we're saying that we want a level two.
Or not, and you guys want to do it, then, then back and talk.
I want to say it's code, it's like, come ahead.
So we have a, a, a building that has its, right, I mean Manny's Corner, put in two or four, I think four actually, uh, there's four, it's, uh, so there's two pools with each two connections. They only have six stalls, I think, maybe, maybe not even that. And if you look at the number card, there, there is retail space parking and, and now it says for electric vehicles only, which, you know, it means that now people are parking on Main Street or in the store. I understand that, you know, this is involving phase and that sort of stuff, and I do, I'm not really sure whether level two is, uh, in retail space and commercial spaces really handy, uh, uh, level three is the highest rate, what we have in bylaw. That is handy because then you can charge in half hour, even if you get somewhere, level two, you have to sit there for seven hours to get charged. And so level two is not a real practical charging level. It's practical at home, you park your car, sleep overnight, next morning, it's full again. But level two in the retail space is not practical unless you, you spend a huge amount of time there. But at Manny's Corner, you go in and out, so it's not very practical, I mean haircut only takes twenty minutes, so by law, right? So level three charging is handy for retail and commercial spaces, but level two is not. And, uh, level two is handy for hotel or, you know, places we stay for a long time. So while I appreciate, you know, where this is going and private owner, for a week, electric car. I don't, I, I don't think every stall needs to be electric, it's more concerned to be the level two, two, that, that. I mean, I don't know where it should be, one in five? Twenty percent?
Counselor, we, um, through the mayor, I believe Manny's has the two because they have apartments. It's not just for retail in and out.
It's for charge, so it came in as for charges advance.
Yeah.
It depends those before.
Right, but I, I believe it's because of the apartments, like they don't know, yeah, more so than in and out, they're okay to park there overnight.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I don't think it should be on all parking stalls.
Okay.
I think if you, you know, maybe a quarter or a third or something, depending on the number of stalls that you have.
Counselor, Mary.
Okay, on, on the level two, who, who pays for the power that they're using to charge these vehicles?
The owner, so in, in this case, the owner of the dwelling, if you're parking in your own.
That you're parking in.
Yeah.
Where's in your rent?
Yeah?
Where's in your rent?
I, I don't, I don't, I I don't agree with it. I'll speak to it.
Um, so typically, when you plug in the car, you have to pay, right? So, and the owner of the charger can set the rate, so some set the rate really high, some are really low, depending on whatever they pay for. But the fee is set by the owner, in this case Manny's Corner has set a rate. And, uh, if you, it is no longer in this case, it used to be where E Vs were charging for free, that's the longer case. You have to pay, you have to, on nap, and, and pay, and, uh, so I paid eleven dollars at bylaw for half hour. Which feel, you got, and then.
Counselor, we, so through the mayor, I just have a question on that because, um, remember this car pulling to Pemberton and whatnot, the one car did not charge, no Whistler. Like, so do you have to have, I'm just, I know this is a situation, but sorry, I'm just curious. You know that all charging stations will come, no, how is it, um, the Tesla will only, charging stations will only do Tesla? Right. But the other charging stations will do everything including Tesla. I don't know. I do know that. I know that. For someone with car pulling, this could not charge. I go to different places.
Counselor McHenry first.
Um, I, I, I have a hard time with putting charging stations all over. They never used to put, make us put a gas station in our, in our businesses and in our homes and, and stuff like that, like, instead of a gas station, why can't they have a, a charging station and not put it on everybody? That, that's a problem I have, like, you know, there's gas stations, service stations for fixing these things and, and fueling them up. Wouldn't they continue that? Why do they have to put it on the homeowner and, and everybody else? I mean, you know, we, we can hardly afford a home now, let alone these guys starting to jam, this shit don't work. This stuff don't work. Anyways, I, I'm a little, um, I'm a little sore on it because I don't think they're gonna go a long ways, but myself personally, I think it's gonna go to hydrogen. And I would prefer to take that. Thank you.
Hey, I think just this needs to be reworked a little bit, I, I would suggest that, single detached dwellings, uh, at this point requires two parking spaces. Right, so that's your standard, single family home requires two parking spaces, as per eight point three point seven. And then it would require, and then, and then I think in that case, we scrap, uh, E V charging requirements mid for, for commercial spaces. I think we should set it at twenty percent, um, and, uh, and no more than that.
And then level two?
Two, uh, levels, so at home, a level two at home, I paid six hundred bucks to get the thing. If you do a commercial one at Manny's Corner, that's a four thousand dollar, and, uh, because it, it'll allow you to pay, so it's a four thousand dollar for two stalls, uh, four thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, right?
It is.
That's, that's why I think the brewery also said, four thousand bucks, plus the electrical that needs to come with it. And, uh, but you know, if, uh, if you need, you know, ten parking spaces for, for development, you make one or two E Vs.
So can we send this one back and guess kind of get it and remember that we don't want people to spend that extra money when they're trying to build a business.
Through the chair, uh, I have friends in Paloma that their food business is working with car dealerships, installing choppers and homes.
That's fine, but if it goes to hydrogen, then we're all, you know, and I.
Section eight point five bicycle parking apartments deserve conversation. Uh, because the proposal here is that apartment dwellings would be required, ride bicycle room for storage, townhouses would be required to, to, um, provide two parked bicycle stalls, bicycle parking spaces, and so we believe this is important step, but open to, however council wishes to address bicycle parking.
Counselor McHenry.
Okay, we, we're gonna start making these guys put parking spots in their buildings and they're using these e-bikes and their batteries are burning the place down. No, thank you. Then we even let them on the ferries.
You can take it, like an e-bike, you can take it off, Mary. It's happened before this meeting or like?
I was told that they can't bring them e-bikes on the ferries because of the, the potential of them lighting on fire.
Through the mayor, we can look at that, we can look into that.
Okay, I, I, I don't know, like, I, I think it's kind of weird to have a bylaw that has a bicycle parking design criteria in low, I just.
I'm telling you.
I just cannot, I wonder on this, yeah, I mean, and it's not like we don't have actual, um, bike, uh, parking little things on, like the district office in our public areas, we, we have got bike stalls, we have them outside the hospital, we have them outside the, the schools, I, I don't know, just in town.
Thanks, through the mayor. Listen, the, the, and again, we're gonna go back to this, the idea of the bylaw is when we're trying to, and Kevin was trying to, and James and Zersees, and we're trying to get all these things out. We're trying to meet this as attractive as a community, so to imagine a community, not, and not, not to be distracted by what people need to build. Just now, that's not the intention for this, but this is just, what kind of community does this look like if we've got bicycles and cycling and availability of electrical charging stations around town? Don't want it, great, right, don't want it. We're general, we're not precious to it, we're, we're not feeling attacked by this, this is fine, if you think that that's not something that we need, fine, cool, not a problem. We can, we can come back and forth and discuss it, we don't know, and then add it, pull it, add on to the air down the line, we're not, we're not precious to it. If you think that things are too much, let's get into that, say it's too much, we're not. We, we add all these things in to try and build the, eh, euphoric type community. Money wasn't an issue, investors weren't an issue, everything was going to be absolutely perfect. The idea is just to get that in. It's up to counties when we start just having the first round of cuts on this, and that's all we're trying to do here, so we're quite happy with that.
Counselor, fine.
I agree with Joe, we do need to make things attractive, but I don't think we need to, um, make it sort of mandatory or this, like we need that people can, yes, they do want to do this, we are wanting to attract this, but to actually put, it has to be this, it has to be that, I, I don't think we're at that stage yet.
Counselor, we, through the mayor, I agree, like if I have a six thousand dollar bike, I'm gonna put it in my suite. Right, you know, this building in a little cage and an extra room and all of this stuff to put it in, I don't think we're there.
At least we gotta be very careful with making too many rules.
Yes.
That's what we got to be careful with. We've been trouble all my life over that, man. Too many rules, too many rules would not do.
Counselor, we.
I think that needs to be baby steps.
Yeah, I would agree, I think it needs to be baby steps too, and I, I agree that it, you know, people want to have this, then they can, they should have it, they, they can put it on their own. I just don't think that it should be a bylaw. And there's a new bylaw that they're forcing people to do that.
Was it Vivian's area again? Sorry.
A, B.
And the zoning bylaw for area B has part of permission scorecards. I was part of that discussion. It was very, and ultimately, I think the compromise there was that there was some recommendations or some requirements for businesses to install bike tracks. So that you can park your bike, that, uh, even though that we indicated that if, if a person is gonna go ride their bike out to a French winery, they, they deserve a lot of praise, a rack. But, uh, um, but we did make it, uh, very low to the ground, uh, because the same day, mayor. How many, how many bikes are gonna come out to all these businesses, even, but, like, gonna go shop at, at the, uh, at shoppies that are there, you know, there's growth, they're gonna take that, but having a stall or two, maybe one, a rack or two to, to, to park your bike, can be able to lock your bike, which is the most important thing, to have a rack, so you can wrap your block around it so that, you know, you can actually go inside. Having that facility, I think is, is a good idea.
So in area B did that, where did they do that? Like where, where, where do?
They, they, they went from seven pages, a half, where they said, you know, businesses over this and that need to have two racks where you can wrap your, where you can, you can lock your bike up against.
Counselor, I'm, I'm, which was first, so Counselor, we, uh, through the mayor, I, I don't have a problem with having bike racks, they whatever. It's just adding a room in apartment complex or a townhouse dwelling or, I don't know, I just think that it's over the top that we really. If, the question I have, I guess, rather than just sitting here complaining, um, if all of this is in here and then someone comes to us and say they want to build something, a townhouse complex or whatever, and this is in there, do we have to abide by that or does council still have the?
Three words, and council always has the ability to vary it, and so the staff are bound with what's in the bylaw, they can prove what's in the bylaw. Anything that doesn't conform or if a developer feels they need special consideration, they would come before you for that.
So, Sersey would come before us to say, okay, this guy wants to do whatever, whatever, whatever.
Yes.
Um, but I'm recommending that we don't expect him to put this room and cage there for bicycles. We can waive it then or?
Yes, well, just like you can waive the regular parking requirements from two per fifteen meter, fifteen square meters, you waive that, um, you can say, do the same with bicycle park requirements. They can always apply variance to either not have it or loosen the
Okay, well, then I have another question on these variances. If someone that's building a large complex or whatever, do they have to pay for variance on each thing that they want changed or can they do it in a group setting?
Um, they, they can vary, they can do multiple variances within one variance permit, so they can vary car parking as well as the bicycle parking if they want to.
Okay, just under the one variance.
Under the one permit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mary.
Bicycle parking. I, um, I think a lot better things to talk about, but I do have a bicycle stand at our store. And they never use it. They don't use, they'll jam it up against the no posts or against the building, they won't use it, and it's right out front. Just a little heads up.
Yeah, I, I, I think that if a, if a business wants to put in a bicycle rack or bicycle cage, I think that enhances their business for people to come in and shop. for people to come in and shop, and their bike can stay. I I just don't think that we should be having people pay $500 to get rid of this. Counselor Flannan.
Can I throw a curve ball here?
No.
Has there been any discussion on the motorized scooters for parking for those, because we have so many of them in town? Sorry, but it's something that they're parked like at the grocery store, they're parked right where people walk and everything else, so they're both often bikes. We've got a quite a large, you know, population of motorized scooters turning up all the time.
We're not going to do this, then, you're gonna build a cage or?
No, it's just parking, but I just wanted to throw that out, if that could be something that we should probably consider, not right now, but something.
Thank you, through the mayor. An excellent, excellent segue, which haven't mentioned segues either, if you should. But an excellent position that I think we'll probably add into it, I think that's really good. Again, going back to council and just reminding them, this is everything that we want in the utopia conditions. If the Fairmont comes tomorrow and wants to build a hotel here, I'm gonna say build a room in gold plate and make sure it looks beautiful for your $6,000 e-bikes that all these tourists are gonna come and use our town with. Keep them safe inside it, and the Fairmont will probably just go, yeah, okay, that's cool. If Manny's decides to extend his store, we're gonna build it, he wants to come in and do it. Okay, he's gonna come in for a thousand variations anyway, so they're gonna look at what we need to do, we need to be common sense, but this is for the utopia, this is what we're building here. And I get it, we don't need rooms and cages and blocks and stuff and everything, but even in the district building, when people come, they use our bikes, they wanna bring their bikes into the building so they don't get stolen. And we can't say people are gonna steal your bikes and then not provide them somewhere to lock them up. That's the counterintuitive. So we need somewhere to lock the bikes up, already need to have the fact that people are gonna get their bikes stolen.
Are these people coming for court?
Some of them are, but at the end of the day, and I think it's appropriate, we should just keep it in mind, let's not just completely scrap it, we'll take away and try and massage it. But definitely don't just scrap it, we'll just get rid of the idea, because we're trying to create a really good, positive, what this looks like for everybody's ears as well.
Counselor DeBryn.
And and I think that's a, that's a really good thought. I mean, I'm sitting here with two buildings in my mind constantly as we debate this. And that is a new hotel and Riverview, hey, up there, right? So everything that we've been discussing, I've been applying to those, what what would we like to see there? Because we cannot, like if we scrap things. Now, they have no obligation, we cannot come back to them later and say, listen, you gotta put in, you know, a a mobility scooter charging station. Which is a, a, a very realistic thing, because where, where would you charge your mobility scooter? Well, maybe that, those are the things that, so every time we have these discussions, don't think about your own home, don't think about your, you know, your, your, your neighborhood of the, on the hub farm, but think about these larger new developments that we're, you know, these cages may actually be a reasonable request for.
I'm on the same page of what Joe just said, because if someone's not gonna wanna do it, they're gonna say, hey, we're doing this, but I don't wanna do this, can we work at it? So it can always be a person who is building or whatever, they can, they can come and say, hey, I don't think this is gonna work, and this, but if you don't have it on the table, it's not gonna be thought of. And then, oh, like, I'm sorry, mobility scooters, how many times have I seen them stuck on the hill to Mohawk or to the hump farm and sitting there for for a day and a half because it ran out of gas or ran out of juice? I say keep it.
Counselor McNary.
I just go for the obvious, I'm just thinking the whole time that his batteries were burning, he'd stop and charge it up at the store and then head up the hill and run out 100 yards up there. But at the same time, being back to when I was originally in North St. Paul, was, are we gonna make these projects? Like, you know, we're talking big projects, are we gonna make these projects so simple, or so technical and everything else, and drive the expenses up? I mean, we live in Littlewood, we're not living in Cologne or Vancouver, at Camels, we got a ten year project here, are we gonna make these projects so expensive that these outfits are gonna say, it's not gonna be worth it, we got 10 years to pay for this safe, and then and then that, you know, what what happens after that? Like, we can say, wait, sure, these guys can do that, they can do this and this and that and whatnot, but when it comes right down to the fact, those guys aren't working for no money. And if we make it so expensive for them, I mean, they can put them in later, they can put them in if they want. We make all these rules for these guys to abide by. They might just wreck their car up, head down to Cologne and do it. They'll do the same thing in Cologne, as you do in Lleu, I mean, you know, sort of a thing. We've got to be careful, the rules, make too many rules, we drive the cost up, the government's already doing that with the building codes, and then we're adding to it.
Thank you, a a really good point, and I appreciate that point, and I think that that they does take us on, yes, the audio wall, how we're doing these things. They remember as well, and I do appreciate what you're saying, I think that's really valid. These are all the, this is our, this is our wish list, and this is the only opportunity we get to see a rough wish list, and our list, the wish list for its reading is is fairly minimal. And they will ask for variations, they will ask for variations on absolutely everything that we, that we ask for. And you guys have the opportunity to be there, that if we don't get any of our wish lists on here, or any of the things we'd like to see, attractive lighting, nice landscaping, electric chargers, bicycle parking, easy access, we don't ask for any of these things. And we just ask for the bare minimum, they're gonna come back and ask for variations on the bare minimum. And it's going, it it's, we're gonna be left with a subpar development in 10 years' time, that we're not gonna have anything, we're not gonna have landscape, we're not gonna have bicycles on it, we're not gonna have anything like that. So whatever we don't include in this, if we just left it bare, follow the VC building codes, care minimum, bare minimum, bare minimum, they would still be in here bleeding heart. And they'd be in here bleeding heart, saying we want variations on parking, we can only put one parking stall, or we're gonna go con. And we can only put in single blazing, blazing, beating extreme, but that's what they'll do. And I'm not saying that, but our job and our responsibility is to keep the community in mind with this, and they are gonna vary it, and they're gonna ask for variations, and we expect them to ask for variations. But this is our kind of wish list to get that utopia type idea that we're trying to give back, and I appreciate what you're saying, I'm not knocking that, so.
Counselor, we, through the mayor, I I understand what you're saying, Joe, and I also understand what Counselor McNary is saying, but I feel more comfortable leaving things in knowing that they can apply for one variance permit to cover a multitude of things, because we have no expectations of developers or even someone building their home, that's what we're gonna get, is nothing. So I don't think it's any any big developer or whatever has already gone through all this stuff, and they're not looking at going, well, it's only Littlewood, because we have no idea what Littlewood's gonna be in 20, 30, 40 years, none.
You've seen it.
You've seen it, well, I'm glad you've seen it, but I'm just saying, like, I don't know, I know my thoughts when I first came here and I know my thoughts now, and I see it being a different community than what it was 15 years ago or whatever, it's changing, and the people are changing, the way people travel are changing, they're walking, they're riding, they're bicycling, you know, and they're not bicycling on a $120 Canadian tire bike, like they're spending fortunes on these things. So, I mean, I get it, I I'm not in agreement with the cages, but I'm okay even it in there and them, you know, coming and asking for a variance to take it out, or we may get some really nice hotel person that said, that wants a really top notch place, that people really wanna come here for conferences, for all kinds of things, look at the hiking and all the things we have. There's no reason why we can't dream of those things and make it happen.
Counselor DeBryn.
Okay. I I I admire your your ambition and 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 I think it's, it's indeed really good to be ambitious in the zoning bylaw. I'm also very sympathetic to you that, you know, you shouldn't go euphoric, I think that's the word.
I am not just interested.
I'm not really sure whether we want to, so maybe, maybe there is a bit of a compromise where we say, okay, well, and we could also see it, as I think you said very well in the beginning, this isn't looking up, right? So let's, let's take a step forward, but let's not go euphoric, right? Let's, let's say, okay, well, you know, what are the reasonable things to do that we can still waive if if it is required? Let's make it accessible for, you know, or more accessible for small developments, you know, a single family home, we shouldn't burden that too much. But, you know, when we talk about a hotel, well, what are the minimum requirements that we wanna see in terms of, you know, charging mobility scooters or scoring plates or or other things? But let's, let's take a step forward, and maybe then in five years' time, and next council will say, well, we're gonna take another step forward, right?
Counselor Flannan. Sorry.
And through the mayor, I'd just like to remind council too that, you know, when, when you find something in this zoning bylaw or in the, in the current zoning bylaw, it's passed already, that you know, we have two or three or four developers coming for a variance for the exact same thing. That's when you take it out of the bylaw, because you know it's, it's not working for the community. So I, just to remind council that this can still be changed even once it's enforced, once it's adopted.
Counselor Flannan.
This may have a few too many teeth, so should we just put it to a public consultation? Yeah, and then move on.
And through the mayor, like I said, we could, we could spend the next three hours on this one, we joke, the idea tonight is again, same idea, is this too much? Yep, okay, next, municipal parking funds, let's get a look at it, let's move on to it, since, great, we get it, this is too much, too much, we'll take it away, we'll chew it up, we'll try to get it out of public consultation, they'll chew it up even further and see if we don't like that idea as well. Because what you're thinking is the same as with the public, they're gonna think, well, the developers are gonna ask for variations, so we still need to try and chew through that idea, so.
So you're saying move on?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Very good. Section, section eight point six parking spaces, location and citing, I do not feel this is controversial, I think this is very straightforward. I think it's no, no, quite frankly, and and eight point seven in particular, the giving people direction on parking widths, parking depths, exact aisle widths, that type of thing, these, these are critical within a zoning bylaw, but I don't, there's nothing I'd like to flag for you, so if there's anything you'd like to discuss, please share.
You just said, why even a hospital?
He didn't. We're good?
Okay. Oh, sorry, Counselor, we, through the mayor. Um, I I haven't actually read all of this, I will admit, so I know with me. Is there anywhere in here where it says how big a parking space should be? Because as vehicles are getting smaller and smaller and smaller, some of these spots are getting, I've been to a few where, boy, if I gotta park that Dodge, I'm in trouble.
Three worship, absolutely, yes, at the top of page forty seven, section eight point seven point eight, we do prescribe lengths and widths.
Okay.
And the the parking stall width is 2.6 meters wide, that is fairly standard in in most municipalities, it's not it's not significantly smaller than anywhere else. We certainly could go wider, the challenge, of course, being that it takes up more land, so it is, it is in the top of page forty seven, yes.
Well, I know when we built our house in Calgary, we had to have our garage the way we that their codes were, whatever, we couldn't get our pickup truck in the garage, so we had to have it extended, so that's why I'm curious on some of these, like I say, I'm not a major. Thank you.
Counselor Flannan. I do like that question from counsel, we, are these measurements more for urban or have they shrunk at all? Because again, thinking as rural, we do have pickup trucks, long boxes, everything else, and the parking challenge, like myself, who that's why I was talking to in small spaces.
Through your worship, these were not adjusted downwards to reflect urban, these are fairly standard, however, 2.6 meters for a duly with with extended mirrors does not work. And 5.5 meters long for a long box does not work, I'll be frank. However, the good news is that if a builder developer is targeting certain things, they will build larger than this being the minimum. The the minimum, however, is is if you're building 20 or 30, 40 stalls, they can't go smaller than this, they absolutely can build larger if that's their customer.
So Counselor Flannan and I just take up two syllables.
And then we get our pictures on Facebook because we're the Rocking Parkers.
Do your, Counselor DeBryn.
Only due to your bumper sticker, I work for it, anyway. Eight point seven point 11, parking area grades, so this is the surfacing of parking stalls, which is a thing that has come before us a number of times, and where we've provided variances. Is it my defending that at this point, the zoning bylaw indicates that parking areas, regardless where they are located, must be made out of asphalt concrete or permanent papers or cobblestones or whatnot, they cannot be gravel?
Just above profits reading or permeable drivable surface?
Which as was not limited to the following.
Three point seven, gravel? Through your worship, yes, that's my understanding that would qualify as one of the permeable surfaces. I'm happy to go line by line, but as it, as it gets to the rest of the parking requirements, perhaps I can jump to eight point one, eight point 14 municipal parking reserve fund, it's very common in municipalities. If in an instance, a developer can't or won't provide all the spaces required, that there is an option for them to contribute cash for the district to to make other arrangements, so I just wanted to highlight eight fourteen for that purpose.
It's very common, yeah, if they can't get a lot of mass, so if they can't get a lot of mass and the people next door wouldn't sell the land, it won't get parking, we just take it upside. So this, so as a kind of payment, we, to be basically just take that thing to the flowers that we have there.
All right, section nine, if I may, subdivision regulations, as a proven officer, it is critical, there is a very well documented series of how small, large a lot can be, where the frontage is measured from, what the lot area is, how we handle pan hells, how we handle parcels. So this isn't consistent, this is consistent with the provincial best practices for subdivision, happy to chat to anything if you wish, but this is good guidance, and I don't any questions on section nine?
No questions?
Lovely. Section 10 rural zones, you will find that a lot of these are very consistent with what was done before, and so happy to to go through, is it detailed as as or not, but the point with the ALR zone is that it has to reflect the the province's best practices and the land commission's requirements. And so there's a series of permitted uses, a series of lot widths, lot depths, density, maximum lot coverage, setbacks and such over the course of of what is that, three pages, any discussion on A1 agricultural land deserves zone?
Yes.
Counselor McNary.
Um, I think our, the the setbacks and whatnot are, they might work in Surrey or something like that, but for around here, I I I have a problem with their setbacks.
What number are you looking at? Ten point?
10.1, 10.5, there's 30 meters and and all, all of the setbacks are it it's, what I was talking about before, you know, on their thing, you know, you put 30 meters, you know, they're, they're, they're promoting farming and whatnot, yet they're taking 30 meters off. I mean, holy, you know, 30 meters of a quarter section all the way around, that's huge amount of ground.
Compost.
That's for composting.
Well, yeah, well, I've worked in the compost, you know, up the hill there in in Lethner and whatnot, and the 30 meters. Well, yeah, well, I, I've worked in the composting, I want to up the hill there in, in Lethner and whatnot, and the thirty meters is, yeah, you take a hundred feet, you know, and it takes, the one going accounts all the way around, it's huge. And, and, but, I, I, I don't like the setbacks and what, you know, like, I don't know, I, like, I'm a farmer, and you, you start taking thirty meters off, off things all the way around, and it, it's.
It's three worship, I mean, typically on, on residential, when we get to residential, you'll see that the setbacks often are six meters to account for a vehicle, right? The garage must be set back a certain amount to allow parking and then, and then a vehicle. Yes, this being ALC land, these are minimum eight hectare parcels. Is the concern around, may I ask about residential uses, the, the seven and a half meter, is that more in line? Is it, is it primarily the composting facility setback that is offensive or is it all of them?
It's, um, it's kind of all of them, like, you know, like permitting a building back seven, seven point five meters, you know, front line and rear line and interior side lots and stuff like that, like, why?
Through your worship, it, it's merely to create conditions where your use of your property is, works well with your neighbor's use of their property and, and creating some space so that the building's not right on the property line, but this is discretionary.
Yes, I'd like to discuss that, that, for sure.
So there are, sorry, there are properties that are across the river, um, this whole area down Sumner Road that are all A L R land. Like all these properties right down here. On the green section right here, all these properties, so if you were to have anything down there, I mean, they wouldn't be allowed to do anything with these setbacks. Because they are like one acre lots.
No, so they're two and a half acre.
Are they two and a half acres lots? Like all the ones, well, Grauslers, but Julie Brown's is not that big. I mean, hers is only, what's that?
Tompkins?
Tompkins, yeah.
That's just for the, it will jump ahead.
Oh, okay, just for the minimum, okay, okay, I'm just looking at A L R, so, sorry.
Uh, Counselor Flan.
I kind of disagree with Counselor McNary on the composting facilities, making them smaller, because composting facilities can stink, they can leach and everything else, and I'm sorry, if I have a property right next to a composting plant and that's only seven and a half meters away from what I've got, um, yeah, I disagree with changing that one just for the composting facility, just because there's so many other factors there as to what's being composted, how it's being composted, smell, leaching and everything else.
Want to answer, Counselor Flan? Thirty meters and seven and a half meters isn't going to make any difference to the smell, I guarantee you that. The leaching, a possibility, but they all have to be lined and everything else. So it's not going to make any difference there, the smell is going to travel through the whole town, it just, it don't matter. If you did see a composting faculty and understand how it all works and whatnot, it would make a bit of difference, but we would say, put off that line for two hundred yards. That's, that's where I have a problem with it. And it's the same way with animals being close to the property line and, and stuff like that, but I don't like, it needs to be discussed.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, yeah, I, not for changing that.
Maybe we should just take up composting.
Okay, well, and respectfully, I appreciate that, yes, after consultation, we'll be back before council for first reading and, and the discussion, absolutely. Eight two, agricultural zone, non A L R, similar, we've got permitted uses, we've got a minimum lot size now of two hectares, we've got what can be done in the property, lot coverage, permeable, non, impermeable, and then setbacks again. Okay, very good. Our one rural residential, as you're familiar, these are, are areas where limited services, and so we aren't proposing density, but allowing for lots as small as point two of a hectare if there is municipal water, lots as small as one hectare if there is not municipal water. Prescribes lot width, coverage, setbacks, and so.